Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the meeting of June 8th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And would you all please rise and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to abide by the United States Constitution to become a religious status, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a really long meeting, a long agenda tonight. So basically, the regular announcements about silencing cell phones so that we don't disturb others in the room, speaking into the microphone, as I will attempt to do. And so we should have six voting members tonight, although Felix is supposed to be here, but he's not here yet. But what I'd like to do is appoint VJ Gopal S. Columbia as a voting member for tonight's meeting, because Fred Cantor won't be able to make it tonight. So we should have a full slate of planning board members when Felix arrives. So the first item is approval of the January 12th, 2023 meeting minutes, or to approve and adopt the January 12th, 2023 planning board meeting minutes. I had sent some nonsubstantive corrections on those to the planning office. And any other members have any comments or corrections on that?
No, but I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes.
Okay, Anthony moves the adoption. Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Ravi seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that passes six to zero. All right, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one being Duchess Storage, formerly known as Cube Smart Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. At 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible, the applicant seeks the following approvals for the project known as Duchess Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, located at 1574 New York State Route 52, consisting of several tax parcels, one of them being 1.99 acres, also located at 1576 Route 52, consisting of .785 acres, all in the general business zoning district. So for this site development plan and special use permit approval, this is to construct a climate-controlled self-storage facility on the former Cube Smart Self-Storage parcels. Two buildings are to be constructed in two phases. Phase one will consist of the construction of Building One, a 97,275 square foot, two-and-a-half-story structure. And phase two will consist of the construction of Building Two, an 18,150 square foot, two-and-a-half-story structure. 117 parking spaces are required pursuant to the town code, and 51 parking spaces are proposed, of which 34 are proposed to be land-banked. Four loading spaces are required pursuant to town code, and 10 loading spaces are proposed. Would someone like to make a motion to open this public hearing?
So move.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Ravi seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes six to zero. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Nicholas Ward Willis with Keenan Bean on behalf of the applicant, 1547 Route 52 Florida Realty. I'm also joined tonight by our civil engineer, Mark Day, and our architect, Keith Schofield. I'm also joined by the new owners of the property. This is a new applicant. The property was sold. And our new owner is 1547 Route 52 Florida Realty. And the representative, Michael Howson, is out with us tonight.
Welcome.
As the board and public may know, this is an application for reapproval of the previously existing, previously approved site plan and special use permit for this project. And there is partial construction on the site. And we're looking forward, as we've indicated to the board in our prior meetings and presentations, of completing this project and getting it underway this construction season so we can start work on it and build self-storage facility on the site that's been somewhat under construction for the past five years. The chairman described the project, which I'll just summarize briefly. It is at the intersection of Routes 52 and 82, 1547. It's in Route 52. It's in the GB District. And there are 2.77 acres on which we're proposing two commercial storage buildings to be constructed in two phases. The first building is 97,275 square feet, and the second is 18,150 square feet. The site plan you have before you is identical to the one that was approved previously. This project was approved in 2017. A negative declaration was issued, and site plan approval and special use permit issued by the planning board. Conditions of that approval, including Health Department, DOT, obtaining the SWIP approval from DEC, were all obtained. And a building permit was issued in 2018 as all the conditions of the prior approvals have been satisfied. The building permit was issued, construction occurred, and then unfortunately, due to some financing issues of the prior owner and the COVID, that construction stopped and has been dormant for about five years. And our client looks forward to commencing with the construction. The site is identical as was approved previously with the one access onto Route 52. We did provide the board with revised elevations, which we think are a change and an improvement to the project. Those were reviewed in detail, and the architect can provide a brief overview. We did, with the board's discussion, present two options, either red or gray facade, and we have settled on the gray facade. And welcome comment from the public of the board on that tonight. Some issues that we've discussed with the board that I know are in some of the comment letters that I want to proactively address and put out there is the project was previously approved for connection to have water supply and the private well now, the department approved that. There was discussion about connecting to public water. However, in discussions with the town, there are two potential locations where we could get that water, and those plans are not finalized. And if we wait for that, that will delay the project. And we're not in favor of that. We would have to go do later on to connect. So the project that we propose would be to continue with the previously approved water on-site. And at a later point, should the public water became available, that's to our advantage. We would want to connect to that. But we don't want to wait for that and go through that process and then not get construction done this year. The other issue that was discussed was the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. We have provided documentation of the number of that. We have obtained that from DEC. So we have our SWIP for this site already obtained. The final issue we want to discuss was the discussions with DOT. At the last meeting, the board had noted there were some proposals from DOT to do some work at the intersections of Route 52 and 82. Mark Day reached out to DOT, and they confirmed they do have some proposals for aroundabout at that location. But it's still in the design phase. It's not being funded. It's not one that is committed to going forward. And so we don't have that direction from DOT. The good news is that, as you did in the past, this planning board would hopefully issue conditional approval that requires us to go to DOT and get a permit. We obtained a permit last time from DOT. We believe we'll obtain a permit from DOT this time. And during those discussions, they'll have to sort of work our project into their discussions about aroundabout and how that would work. They also, being the owner of the road and not the town, would make the decision as to whether sidewalks are required or not. They're too, they're not far enough along in the design phase where they know if they're going to ever require sidewalks. So it's not something that this board could answer the question on. It's ultimately DOT's. We understand that's something that the board is interested in. But ultimately, DOT is the owner of a road. Will make that decision. They'll make that decision once we get our conditional approval and then work with DOT to get the work permit issued. So that is, Mr. Chairman, just an update on some of the other issues we discussed with the board last time. Mark, I don't see any additional comments?
God, nothing covered.
All right. And do you have anything that we can maybe show the public in terms of maybe architecture or anything like that?
Yes, I'll ask Keith Schofield, our architect, to come up. I did bring a board as the board had requested. So we're sharing some of the materials. And Keith, if you can just put the elevations up and walk the board through the elevations, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. That's great.
Look at the bottom folder. See the yellow folder in the bottom? Oh, on your taskbar here. You're welcome.
There you go.
So what you have before you is the renderings of...
If you could just speak into the microphone, that'd be great.
The renderings of the two buildings. The main building is metal panel system. The metal panels are a light, the lighter color is a warm limestone, it's called. And so it's a metal panel. It also has a texture that is sprayed onto it to emulate ephesus. But it is a full insulated metal panel to go on the structural system. The darker accent bump outs that you see, that is called antique bronze. And around the base of the building, under the windows and all, is a stone panel system. And that's also in the gray family. The colors actually pick up the monument as asked for. And on the corners of all the buildings where the building jogs in and out, there is an ephesus panel system at the bottom, and it's called terraneo. And then above it is an ephesus brick system on all those corners. So at the very top of the building is a, the cornice work is also an ephesus system. And that's called smoke signal for colors. Now I can bring you all these samples before you so that you have an idea of what they all look like together.
I'll start down there, and then we'll just pass it around.
Excuse me, John. Do you mind having them put that on the chair when you're done so we can get it on camera, so I'll please?
As she says.
I'm pretty familiar with these.
Only just keep going.
Any chair where no one is currently sitting?
Yeah, maybe this front row, yes.
This is the ephesus work that goes underneath it, acts as a base. This is the stonework that's under all the windows. This is the main wall panel color. And it has, like I said, the texture sprayed on to give it the ephesus look. And then this is the accent color.
I'll just mention that we, the public at home won't be able to really hear what you're saying.
This is the very top facade work. Thank you.
There you go. Also, let's not take too much time up here on this because, I don't need to say that now. Because we do want to give the public a chance to speak. And we've got a very long meeting. So I'd appreciate it if we can kind of, we can just pass that around, and then we'll return it over to where we can set it up so that the audience can see it. If that's basically all you have for now, what I'm going to do is just see if there are any members of the public who would like to speak to this matter tonight. If there are, I'll read the rules of conduct for public hearings. But if I don't see any hands, I won't do that. And we don't see any.
There are no hands on this side.
So Mr. Chairman, see, there are no members of the public present. Our project team is certainly available to answer any questions the board may have. We know you do review this part of your meeting.
Right.
And I would note that as the notice of intent to, the board's notice of intent to be lead agency has not yet been circulated for 30 days. The public hearing cannot be closed and needs to be adjourned. So we would request on behalf of the applicant that the public hearing be continued to your next meeting. But also that, given that, I know the public and the board and the client wants to move ahead with this project, that you give consideration towards authorizing staff to prepare a resolution of approval, subject, of course, to comments that you have at your work session next.
Thank you for that. Let me just ask our attorney, Dominique, if you confer with the notion of holding the public hearing open pending the lead agency notice, 30-day time period running out.
Yeah, I think the request is reasonable. You know, if any agency has comments in connection with lead agency circulation, then the public would be able to be able to comment as well. So I think that's fine. In any event, the board would not be in a position to take any action tonight. So I think the request is reasonable.
Okay. All right, then. Why don't we see if there's a motion to keep this public hearing open and continue it at the July 13th, 2023 meeting?
So move.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Jody. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. The public hearing will be continued at the July 13th meeting. All right. And as you said, discussion of the project itself under project reviews will be a little bit later on in the agenda. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That was easy. So the next public hearing, and the second of the two, is Westage Self-Storage Site Development Plan at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Applicant seeks approval for the proposal known as Westage Self-Storage, located at 550 Westage Business Center Drive, formerly, also known as Parcel 6B within the Westage Business Center. The parcel consists of 3.98 acres in the PSC Plan Chopping Center District. The site plan approval would be to construct a four-story, 71,524-square-foot climate-controlled self-storage facility, yet another one. We have several of those tonight. We're going to count them up. If anyone can guess how many, you'll win something. I'm not quite sure what the prize will be yet. So proposed access will be from Westage Business Center Drive via the adjacent parcel located at 600 Westage Business Center Drive with an access easement. Nine parking spaces are proposed, and the applicant is seeking a waiver from the planning board for the required parking spaces and loading spaces. The project will require area variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals for encroachment into the rear setback and the proposed signage. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So move.
Felix moves it. Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. All right. Welcome again.
Thank you. Good evening. Kyle Ahern with La Bella Associates, project engineer. Also with me tonight, we have Bobby Patel, the applicant owner, Leanne Legakis, the project architect, and Ally Fausner with Cuddy Federer. Neil was not able to make it tonight. So Ally's stepping in for the night. So just to give a quick overview for the public and update the board, I'll update the board first on some updates since the last time we were here. Really not too many. I think all the updates were discussed at the last meeting. So we had discussed the tree survey itself is going to be submitted. So that was provided on the grading and erosion sediment control plan. And we had talked about the area that was shown, the hashed area that was shown to be removed. So those, within that area, the individual trees were identified. The signage package that we had brought to the previous meeting was submitted digitally, and the hard copies were submitted so that the board would have that, you know, the official package. Some of the main details that were requested by the town's engineer, the planning board's engineer, being the abutment detail for the bridge and the retaining wall detail, were included, added to the set and included. And then just some other minor technical comments that just led to some minor revisions and some cleanup stuff there. But beyond that, there really aren't any changes to the site plan itself. But some other updates. We did make an application to the village for the water and sewer connections. And we did reach back out to the Department of Health on their involvement with the water and sewer. The original, the engineer who wrote the original letter following the board's circulation for lead agency is actually now retired. So we're now working with the new supervising health engineer. So we're trying to bring that to a close. But as far as Seeger goes and the planning board goes, the 2015 Westage pump station that was reviewed and approved by the DOH had contemplated a hotel at this site, at Parcel 6B. So we know we're not talking about a capacity issue. We're talking about essentially administratively, who has, you know, responsibility over the system and making sure that, you know, it's operating properly. So we don't think it's a Seeger issue. It's more of a, you know, administrative questions remaining there that we believe can be conditioned of approval. Let's see here. We also submitted to the ZVA, which I'll discuss the variances that are required with my overview of the project. But we made submission to the ZVA, so we expect to be on the July agenda for that meeting. So beyond that, just to give a quick overview on the project, it is located at 550 Westage Business Center Drive. So it's in the PSC zoning district. Self-storage is a permitted use within the zone. We're proposing a four-story building. It's 47 and 1/2 feet to the parapet and 54 feet to the stair bulkhead, where 70 feet is permitted in the PSC zone. The building itself is 71,524-square-foot gross, which is each story of the building is the same square footage. So it works out to 17,881 square feet per floor. The project also requires floodplain development permit. As you will recall, we, the planning board had requested a floodplain impact analysis. That had been provided, I want to say, two months ago, maybe three months ago, and discussed at that subsequent meeting. The town engineer supported our findings that the impacts were negligible given the size of the project's impacts compared to the overall floodplain. Let's see. I believe that's about it. Do you also want to go through quickly the renderings?
Yeah, why don't you do that, please?
Leanne, you want to talk about the architecture?
Hi, Leanne Legakis from Frank Ralph Architects.
Hi.
So just to quickly go over what we did here. Tried to keep it simple design, something that would go in with the landscape, not be too flashy. So all around the base and the stair towers are CMU block. It's a split-face block, so it's not just regularly gray block. And the rest of the building is metal panel of varying gray colors. This is going to be a Cube Smart building, most likely. So they like to incorporate red, but we didn't want to stand out too much, so we toned the red down a little bit. Just used it as a slight accent color. And on the corners of the building, we have this glass feature just for marketing. You can see that it's storage. This is the other side. Besides that corner, we also have some windows facing the highway. Just again, some more marketing and signage. I also brought the materials board back just in case anyone wanted to look at it, or the public.
All right.
But that's pretty much it as far as the elevations go.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, let's see if there's a show of hands of any members of the public who would like to speak to this matter tonight. I see one. Okay. All right. Let me read the rules of conduct so that we have something to go on here. So speakers are going to be asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone. Speaker is limited to no more than four minutes. And we'll keep track of that, and we'll give you a one-minute warning. Please provide only new or different information or commentary, not repeating comments that were previously made at prior meetings. Speakers encouraged to submit their comments in writing if you have, if you'd like to do that so that the board can review them at a later time as well. Comments limited to matters involving the business before the board, that is, the particular application under review tonight. No verbal interruption, shouting, or other outbursts. And we'll go on from there. So the person who raised their hands, would you like to come up to the podium and either give us any comments you have or any questions you might have about the proposal?
My name is Clark Gebman. I'm a resident of 2 Wilson Street in Beacon, and I own 500 feet on Liberty Street that also fronts on the Fishkill Creek. It is in that, it is in this context that I appeared before the board tonight. And I'll just mention briefly, my credentials are that I was at one time a licensed commercial appraiser in this state. No longer practice that actively. The issue that I wish to raise is the diminution of property values downstream through the cost of remediation of the raising of the floodplain because of development that has caused runoff at a more acute basis than it did in the original draining of the swamp or the general perimeter of the development, generally known as Walmart and the entire assemblage that fronts on Route 9 and Route 84. And while I am certain that there has been from time to time discussion as to the retention ponds, flow rates, rain, and storms, as we enter into a new era in our country as it relates to rainfall at rates that are worthy of thought. And the question then becomes, has adequate, what, 17,000? It's not a particularly huge footprint. But it's worth noting that things like French drains and other alternative measures in addition to the retention ponds are certainly engineering-capable of discussion. And it's not just about the, you know, opposed to the structure. It's efficient structure, granted. It's four stories. It's 17,000 feet. But the question really is, is the board, is the board thoughtful about the management of the stormwater in a way that takes into account the downstream interest of the property owners and just in the context of good neighbors? in the context of good neighbors? So it may not be viewed as being, you know, a seminal event of storm, you know, retention and measurement, but I think it's worthy at this time to take a second look at the practices of all the surfaces in the assemblage and not just treat in a segmented manner this latest project. This has been a very, very long history of building blocks of development that have been highly segmented. And while I'm not an attorney...
Let me just mention you have one minute left.
I thank you for your kindness. So while I'm not an attorney and the issue of segmentation is, let's just say, nothing new in terms of complex discussions or appraisal review as to probability acceptance of highest and best use and most logical or probable use of a property. Shoehorning every last corner of the property just because it has grass on it and possible development opportunities and taxation's important consideration for the community, but in the end, I just think it ought to stop somewhere. And quite frankly, I've watched since my ownership on Liberty Street, I've watched the recalculations as reported to me have raised the floodplain by a foot on my property and has caused a certain viewpoint that there is more floodplain in my property than there was. I don't agree with it per se, the calculations, but I think I'm an injured party and I want you to be forewarned that I don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other people in the audience tonight who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I will mention that we received an email, which I'd like to read into the record. This email was, let's see, received June seventh, 2023, and it's from Margaret Barton residing at 543 Regency Drive. So I'll read this verbatim basically. Mrs. Barton says, "I am a resident of the Regency at Fishkill off Merritt Boulevard. I cannot attend the meeting on Thursday, June eighth, due to a prior commitment, but want to put forth my concerns. The first concern I have is the possible removal of the trees that act as a buffer for Route Eighty-Four. Not only would the noise from the cars and trucks increase, but removing said foliage would make the area look barren. My second concern is the four-story construction. Instead of blending in, it will be a visual eyesore. Most of the storage units in the area are one to two stories. This leads me to the third concern, why another storage unit? We have so many up and down Route Nine, I wonder the need for another one. Does every inch of open land have to be built on? Where is the concern for the beauty and green space of the area? Lastly, the talk of easements makes me wonder about the already congestion of the area. With the medical group and hotel, we have to be careful leaving and entering. With more traffic, it will be even harder. Thank you for reading and understanding my opinions. There is no doubt that I am against this proposal." So if there are no more members of the public wishing to speak tonight, I'll ask our attorney and engineer for a recommendation on hearing the comments that we have heard tonight, whether it would be appropriate to close the public hearing tonight or possibly to leave it open for further comments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would recommend that you close the public hearing.
I agree.
Okay. All right. What about the board?
I think we should close it.
Agree.
Anyone have other thoughts? Okay.
I agree.
All right. Well, would someone like to make a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, that was Anthony?
Yes.
Sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So by a vote of seven to zero, we have closed the public hearing tonight. And just wanted, we will be continuing this discussion under other project reviews, but just wondering briefly if the applicant's team would like to make any comments based on what we've heard tonight?
The only comment would be a request, Mr. Chairman, for you to consider directing your attorney to draft a SEER negative declaration, given the extent of review that the board has already conducted since last November on this application, so the applicant would respectfully request you consider that.
Okay, we'll take that up under the project review when we get to it a little bit later on the agenda.
Wonderful.
But thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so that does it for the public hearings tonight. All right. So we have a, an item listed as a discussion. This is for the Ducci Two-Lot Subdivision, Mark and Barbara Ducci applicants. And I see that Mr. Ducci is here. I just wanted to start off by saying, well, thank you for, for coming tonight. This is the Ducci Two-Lot Subdivision located on Carey Road. A small portion of the property is located in the town of East Fishkill. And our understanding is the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval was adopted by the board on January thirteenth, 2022. That's a while ago, right?
Yeah.
And the planning board at that, at a point after that granted a six-month extension of that resolution on July fourteenth, 2022. And then later, the plat was signed by the planning board chair, that's me, on March twenty-eighth, 2023. The applicant would have had to file the plat with the Dutchess County Clerk's Office within sixty-two days after signing of the plat, which would have been on May thirtieth, 2023, but our understanding is that the applicant attempted to file the plat, but the county did not accept the plat for filing.
Correct.
And are requiring a sign-off from East Fishkill, which has not happened yet. So in effect, both the resolution of approval and the signed approved plat have expired, unfortunately. But I was wondering, Mr. Ducci, if you might give us a very brief explanation of the circumstances of the timing issues with, you know, that went into the filing, the attempted filing of the plat?
Sure. I, I went up to the thing a week later, like on April tenth, and when I went through the process and paid the fees, when I finally brought the Marler copy up to the clerk, they went over it and they'd mentioned something about the town of East Fishkill, which is a small portion of property in the front, and they said they couldn't register the lots or do anything until they got a letter from East Fishkill stating that they approved it or that they relinquished all their power and authority to Fishkill. So I came back down to Fishkill and I met with Debbie and I went to Mr. Patress, the building inspector, and we contact, they contacted, uh, East Fishkill, and it took them weeks before they got back to Mr. Patress. And the engineer said something about the mouth of the driveway, he needed something done for sight distance for the mouth of the driveway, when the driveway's been pre-existing for the past five years, I've been living there already, which was approved by East Fishkill when I first built the house five years ago. So I said, okay, we're, we're going. He said he wanted it done by a licensed surveyor. So I got in touch with a surveyor, my surveyor, and he said that that was all done five years ago. I don't understand why we got to do it again, you know, to go over everything. And then when I finally got back to the engineer, he said, well, you have to go to the Highway Superintendent of East Fishkill, and if he approves it, then they'll approve it. So when I went over to the Highway Department, he said he would have to discuss it with town engineer, so he said he would get back to me, and that's been four weeks now, and I've been back to the Highway Department three different times, and every time I go back there, I get a different answer. So I'm still waiting to see what they want to do about it. I haven't heard anything, and it's been almost two months.
Well, let me ask our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, if you have any thoughts or comments on the legal issues of these circumstances and, you know, how we could move forward with this.
Yeah, I, I understand and appreciate that it's been a difficult process to get to this point, and unfortunately, the timing has worked out in such a way that had the sixty-two days expired, but the resolution itself had not yet expired, the simple answer would have been to simply sign a new plat.
Right.
And then that would have started another sixty-two day time period. But unfortunately, the resolution of approval that was granted by this board expired some time ago. And although as far as the town of Fishkill is concerned, the issue that you have is not in connection with the town of Fishkill, it's really regarding the county clerk's office and what they're requiring from you from East Fishkill. There's nothing that's changed as far as this board's original review or approval. And so my recommendation would be, given that as far as the subdivision that was reviewed and approved by this board is not changing from your perspective, would be to reissue your approval resolution on the same terms and conditions that would restart that clock for Mr. Ducci to be able to go and finalize whatever he needs to finalize in order to satisfy the county clerk's office.
And my understanding, I believe, is that we wouldn't even really need to require Mr. Ducci to fill in and submit a whole new application form, but simply if you could just write a letter to, to us at the planning office, just requesting the reauthorization of the previous approval.
Sure, that's no problem.
I think that would, that would get the ball rolling.
Right. I mean, if, if this application had either been closed out and now something was changing or it was being picked up years after the fact, then I would suggest that perhaps a new application would be required, but literally, this was just approved by the board and unfortunately expired with nothing changing, as like I said, as far as the town of Fishkill is concerned.
And all of the SEER determinations and details would still apply because those really don't expire like a resolution.
Correct. Correct. I'm not aware of any changed circumstances as it relates to this subdivision.
Yeah. So basically, I mean, we could actually, well, here's, here's my thought. If you could get your letter into Debbie before our deadline for submissions for the July thirteenth meeting, what we might do tonight, and we will canvass the board on this, is maybe authorize you, Dominic, to actually redraft that resolution of approval and have it ready for the July thirteenth meeting, if that's okay.
I, I'm very happy to do so, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
No problem. That'd be great. I thank you very much.
All right. So let me, um, let me just see if there's a motion from the board to basically request that Mr. Cordisco drafted a resolution of re-adopting the previously approved subdivision so that we could consider that for the July thirteenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. All right, so hopefully we'll see you on July thirteenth then.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is a request for extension of approval. This is for Continental Commons Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, or to consider the applicant's, applicant's representative's request for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary approval as requested in their letter dated May twenty-third, 2023. Welcome. And please, if you could just briefly explain the request.
Sure. Steve Riquelde with Holland and I for Continental Commons. As you know, we were here, I guess, months ago and have been here unfortunately for years now trying to get this sort of completed here after the conditional site plan approval. We are still trying to wrap up some of the final conditions in the 2018 conditional site plan. Importantly, we are still attempting to get the water and sewer connections approved by the county. As you know, last year, the town extended or voted, extended the water district to the property. The county had some questions about whether or not there was enough water capacity in the system to support the project. We had requested that information from the town and unfortunately got insufficient data from the town that suggested that there may not actually be enough water in the system, which has forced us now to go to the Village of Fishkill and then the Controller's Office. And after analyzing the data we got from those two sources, now have confirmed that there is in fact enough water to support the system, but obviously requires us still to get back to the county. Additionally, there are other conditions like the conservation easement that we need to finalize and then a grant of an easement to the Village of Fishkill, who will actually inspect or check the meters that are eventually installed on the property. We submitted the conservation easement along with our letter request for the board's review, and that's to give the burial area to the, or at least the conservation easement to the Fishkill Historical Society, which would then ensure that the burial area is in fact preserved. So there's still some work to be done. We're hoping that we can get this wrapped in the next couple of months, and we won't be back here again, and are now making some real progress in terms of satisfying those, those last conditions.
All right. Dominic, do you have any comments on the legal aspects of the applicant's request for the extension?
No, sir. The, the matter has received preliminary approval and as such is entitled to a number of extensions without limit, and so the board would be in a position to consider granting additional extensions if it so chooses.
Any comments or questions from board members? All right then. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the request for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary approval for the Continental Commons Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit extended to December thirteenth, 2023?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
I second.
Robbie seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So in regard to the draft conservation easement for the burial area that you mentioned, we would just ask that our planning board attorney review the draft and then let the board and applicant know if it looks acceptable or if there are any questions or issues regarding that, which then could be discussed further with the board.
Sure, we can discuss that at another time.
Okay.
And then just along those lines, and there, and again, I know you guys are all working sort of diligently and have a lot of projects before the town. I sense that there's a, well, stress that there's a sense of urgency with respect to the conservation easement. I'm not aware, I'm not sure if you're aware of the supervisor's recent statements with respect to the burial area, but at the last town board meetings, he made a public statement that our team has, and Mr. Broccoli specifically, has changed his mind with respect to the burial area and is now making, is making plans to develop that area contrary to both the site plan and the preliminary site plan approval here. And in fact, accused my client of making a statement to a newspaper source that he was going to put an amphitheater on the burial area. So we want to make clear that we've got no plans to develop that land, which is why we're here trying to get the conservation easement done. So to the extent you can sort of dedicate, obviously, I know you've got a lot of projects before you, but it's important for us to make it clear here that that easement gets done. So it's, the record's clear that we have no intent on changing our minds or not honoring the commitments with the site plan approval and preserving that area of the property.
And also the completion... And also, the completion of that easement is one of the conditions of the final approval. So yeah, let's all keep that in mind.
It is, but unfortunately, we're still having to sort of defend the project here years later. This was not in our letter request, but I've got one other request for your consideration and ask about how to make this, and we can formally put it in writing. Earlier this year, this board authorized that we could felled the trees that were on the north part of the property. That work has been done, but the trees are now sort of down on the property. And again, there's been lots of criticism of the condition of the property, whether or not there were trees removed from the burial area or placed in the burial area. So we're asking for permission to actually clear those trees, just again, the felled portions, to have them shipped and removed so that way we can clean up the property. And there's no question here that the stumps weren't disturbed, that the ground wasn't disturbed, and particularly that the burial area wasn't disturbed while that work was being done. So again, I'm happy to put that in writing, but we wanted to raise this because again, there were statements made both publicly by citizens as well as the supervisor that somehow we didn't comply with that prior order of the planning board.
Yeah. Dominic, what do you think? I would think putting that request in writing would probably be an appropriate way to get that moving.
Yes, and there may be some technical issues there associated with any ground disturbance that's resulting from either clearing or dragging trees, that soil disturbance. So I think like a protocol as to how you propose to do it, I think should be part of the written request to the board so the board could respond to it in an intelligent way.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I might just add that in other municipalities where this kind of stuff is done, what they've often requested is if there is... Avoid doing that work in wet conditions. But even in dry conditions, if there is any disturbance, use the chips to cover any of those disturbed areas. That way, you don't risk putting yourself into a disturbed condition where you would need swim coverage.
Okay. We will get a protocol put in place.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. We are moving on to project reviews. And the first one tonight is 1556 Route 52 and 1562 Route 52 Site Development Plan, Special Use Permit, and Flood Plane Development Permit, or to review draft EAF Full Environmental Assessment Form Part I, draft EAF Part II, and a draft negative declaration, and to consider their adoption. Welcome, Mr. Berger. So I think we have handed out tonight from you those draft seeker documents that I mentioned. So I was wondering if you could take the board through them. And I have seen preliminary versions of this, so I can tell the board that these are fairly straightforward. So it shouldn't really take too long to go through these. And so we'd appreciate it if you could do that.
Sure. So we're going through Part II. Yes. Let me pull this closer. Oh, it's getting closer. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. EAF Part II. Just going to step through the process. Identification potential impacts. Number one is the first impact on land. After reviewing the plans, I find there are no impacts on land. Impacts on geological features, number two. I also conclude there are no impacts. Number three, impacts on surface water. I concluded that there are no impacts. Impacts on groundwater. I concluded there are no impacts. Impacts on flooding. I concluded there is yes. So we go through the parts of it to determine. 5A, proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway. No or small impact because there's a floodway on the site, but there's no actual work being done within it. But there is a floodway on the site. B, the proposed action may result in development within the 100-year floodplain. The same, there's a floodplain on the site, but the work is above or outside the floodplain. The proposed action may be result in development within the 500-year floodplain. The answer again is no or small impact may occur. Again, the 500 years on there, we are working within the 500 year, but there's... The 500-year floodplain is typically everything above the 100 year, and it's minor. So it's a no to small. The proposed action may result in required modification of existing drainage patterns. No or small impact may occur because in order to mitigate the increase in impervious, two practices are proposed, one being the level spreader and the other being the dry well. So those are mitigations to the increase in the impervious. The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. I checked that as no to small to impact because again, with the increase in impervious, there is a slight increase that would come off the site. The mitigation again is the dry well and the level spreader that's being constructed with the gravel. Is there a dam located on the site and need repair? No, but it comes off as no to small to impact as... Because there's really no impact on it. Because there's no, just no. It's either no or small. The answer is no. The other impacts, none. So we move on to impacts on air. After reviewing the plans, I conclude there's no. Number seven, impact on plants and animals. I conclude no. Impact on agricultural resources, no. Impacts on aesthetic resources, no. Impact on historical and archaeological resources, no. Impact on open space and recreation, no. Impact on the critical environmental areas, no. Impact on transportation, no. Impact on energy, no. Impact on noise, odor, and light, no. Impact on human health, no. Seventeen, consistency with community plans. There are no adverse effects. Consistency with community character is consistent, so there's no impacts, and the answer is no. And that concludes Part II. And my recommendations on determination of the significance, which is the Part III, which you fill out. If there's any yes, which there was under the topic of Item 5 flooding, identify. So I put down per EAF Part II, number five. A floodplain development permit will be required pursuant to Town Code 78, and that the proposed project in general conformance with the provisions in Chapter 78, the town engineer has reviewed the stormwater management plan in detail and determined that there will be no impact on site flooding. And then the form goes on to, I recommend, while we've already determined it to be unlisted action, we've used Part I prepared by the applicant, Part II and III prepared by myself. This project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared accordingly. If you so choose, you would be issuing a negative declaration. Those would be my recommendations.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or suggested revisions from board members?
No.
And I'll just mention that when we get to motions, this will be a little bit different from how we've done it normally in the past, but it's actually quite acceptable. And so what we'll do is see if someone would like to make a motion to approve the EAF Parts II and III for the proposed 1556 Route 52 and 1562 Route 52 Site Development Plan, Special Use Permit, and Flood Plane Development Permit as discussed tonight, which includes a statement that a negative declaration will be issued by the board and authorize the chair to sign these documents. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some moved.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second? Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. That passes seven to zero. So normally, we would have an actual, what we call a neg deck document. That's really what we use for filing and circulation. But this is also acceptable. What we would do is basically request that the planning office at the planning board's direction would basically take the information from this document and simply, in a sense, create what we would normally see as a neg deck document. So what I'll ask is, is there a motion to authorize the planning department to prepare a neg deck form for filing and circulation for the proposed project based on review of the EAF Parts II and III as discussed tonight, and authorize the chair to sign it?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure I get this correct.
Yeah, it's simpler than it sounds. Go ahead.
Because we haven't done this before. I just want to make sure we got this right.
Well, we actually, we used to do it like this quite often in the old days.
Oh, okay. I'm here. You've been on before.
Not in current history.
So you're saying the planning department is going to basically draft what we're normally use... Normally, we'd see like a neg deck.
It's basically just a form.
Just a form?
Normally, we would see all of the things that were gone over tonight sort of summarized on the neg deck form. That's what I'm suggesting with my assistance that Debbie could prepare. And it's really going to be quite simple, as you heard the discussion tonight.
And the reason for doing it this way?
That was going to be my second question.
The reason for doing it this way is because we don't have a neg deck.
We don't have a neg deck.
But that's okay. This is a perfectly acceptable way to do it.
It's because your consultant is used to doing it this way and familiar with the way you're handling it.
And this is done by many communities this way. So it's perfectly...
I'm unfamiliar with the way Fishkill did it. So I apologize. This was the method I'm used to in other towns. So I'm unfamiliar with Fishkill.
You don't need to apologize.
But if one makes sure the board knows it's because of me.
And I mean, I acknowledge this application is simpler than some of the others before us, but I guess I'm a little concerned about the precedent that it may set at some future meetings, trying to get these, you know, this neg decks kind of pushed through. Not necessarily this particular application, but to others.
I can assure you, Anthony, that it won't happen as a normal course of action. It's not really a precedent because it's perfectly acceptable and illegal.
Yeah, I guess I shouldn't use the word precedent. But I mean, we're doing it differently here than how we've done in recent years.
Habits. Things can always change.
You know, I used to work for the Department of Environmental Conservation before I had all this gray hair. And, you know, I came across a memo at one point indicating that negative declarations should be written because at the time in 1978, and so they just weren't. You know, they just said, "Well, that's neg deck." And to be quite honest, like, there's still even some planning boards out there that only do verbal neg decks. This board is much more complete and thorough than that. So I think that you have a good practice and in this circumstances, following up with something in writing, I think is totally acceptable.
All right. I mean, with that said, I'm not for holding up an application on these grounds, but I just feel like we should get in the habit... Back in the habit of formal neg decks, especially on some of our complex, but that's my point.
Would you like to move it?
Yes. I'm willing to second it.
All right. Anthony moves it, and Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. And Debbie, I will coordinate with you on making sure that neg deck form is filled out and signed by me.
We can get that done before the next meeting. That would be very helpful, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. All right. So, all right. That brings us to... We have two draft resolutions to get to now. Let me just pull these out. So Dominic Cordisco has prepared two draft resolutions for the board's consideration. One for Site Development Plan Special Use Permit, and the other for the Flood Plane Development Permit. So Dominic, would you please review these with the board?
Yes. So this is what I have that Debbie circulated so kindly was the draft number two, dated June 5th. If you have those before you. The first several pages, first two pages, we cite the procedural history of the application. And in this, what I have in front of me is the Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit Approval. There are two, as you mentioned. The one is for Flood Plane Development. And beginning at the bottom of page two, it indicates that the board has reviewed all the materials submitted. And in connection with the Town Code provisions regarding Site Development Plan Review and Special Permit Review has made appropriate findings that the use of the property is consistent with the surrounding area and all the other special conditions, special use permit conditions and criteria. There are a number of conditions that are attached to this approval. The first one begins on page three. And it seems like there may be an issue with the numbering of pages.
Yeah, on page three. I'm just reading that up right now.
Yes. Well, it is on page three, but it's not actually the right page three. So let's see. It's actually on page four of the set. And so we'll make that correction. But the conditions, I'll go through them so that you have them. The first condition is that outside agency approvals are required for this project, including conceptual approval from New York State DOT for the improvements to Route 52 and/or improvements or construction within the Route 52 right-of-way. The second outside agency approval is approval from the Duchess County Department of Health for the sanitary sewer and waterline improvements. And then the third is the approval of the required area variances from the Town of Fishkill Zoning Board of Appeals. Number two is in connection with a performance bond that the applicant shall post with a building department of performance bond to secure to the town satisfactory installation of site improvements. This is to be an amount calculated by the planning board conflict engineer. So if there's an amount here to insert or that could be inserted, I think that would be the proper process for that. Yeah. Do you want me to go through all of them and then we'll come back?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And then the third, likewise, there's a maintenance bond that is required. This is your standard practice. And so once again, a maintenance bond with the amount recommended by the engineer for the board. Number four is an inspection fee. And once again, this is an amount that's set to be calculated by the engineer. Number five is a strict compliance with seeker mitigation measures required. So this basically piggybacks the written negative declaration into the resolution. So any conditions that are associated with the negative declaration are also conditions of the approval. There are some standard final plan revisions regarding the owner's consent note and including the signature and approval block that's provided in the resolution. and approval block that's provided in the resolution. There's also a proof of satisfactory compliance with any outstanding engineering comments based on the prior engineering review memo from May 5th. There's also a limitation on amenities and accessory structures and outdoor fixtures. It basically says that you can only build what's been shown on the plan. There's also a condition relating to binding effect, that this is binding on the applicant as well as anyone that's a successor to the applicant. There's also a requirement that all fees are paid and the escrow deposits are made. There are conditions relating to landscaping and screening, lighting, and architectural design in details, which once again indicate the requirements that are associated with those various different aspects of the approval, such as the exterior lighting shall be directed away and shielded from adjoining streets and properties, for instance, and also that all landscaping and screening shown on the plan shall be installed and must be installed before certificate of occupancy is issued, as well as compliance with the architectural design details that have been presented as part of the application. And there is a condition now that says that any changes or modifications which are determined to be necessary during the course of construction must be reviewed and approved by the Planning Board prior to the implementation of such changes or modifications, except for those deemed to be minor field changes by both the Building Inspector and the Planning Board's Engineer. There is an easement, a condition relating to an easement that has also been already provided by the applicant's counsel, which I have reviewed and found to be acceptable, but it will need to be signed and recorded as, excuse me, signed and, yes, signed and recorded as part of the approval with the Dutchess County Clerk's Office. And then there's a condition relating to the future installation of sidewalks along New York 52. And that's pretty much it.
So before we go back to some of these that need some things filled in, have you had a chance to review the resolution? And do you have any, any thoughts or comments about it?
We have. We don't have any comments.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So Joe, were you able to find out any figures for the cost estimate of site improvements?
No, I was unable to get them for tonight, no.
Okay. So I guess the question is, what should we do? Is there a way, is there a way we can word the resolution to accommodate that, Dominic? Or what would you suggest?
Yeah, I mean, we actually have had this issue come up in the past, and I believe at least on one occasion, we indicated that it would be an amount to be calculated and then confirmed by the Planning Board's Engineer. And so what I would suggest is, is that rather than specifying the individual amounts for the performance bond, the maintenance bond, and the inspection fee, to be, to state that it's an amount to be determined to be acceptable by the Planning Board's Conflict Engineer in this instance. The other alternative would be to put this off for, for next month, if that's the Board's preference.
So what is the Board's preference? Why don't we go around and see what people think?
Generally speaking, it'd be nice to have the number as opposed to having the engineer approve it off to the side without our, seeing the number. If this were a more complicated application, I think you would completely put the brakes down on it for something like that. So I...
I think what Dominic was suggesting was that we could basically authorize the resolution to be signed, but it would be subject to coming back to the Board with the, the figures for the performance bond, the maintenance bond, and the inspection fee as recommended by the Conflict Engineer. Not sure what, you know, there probably should be some kind of wording inserted into the resolution if we're going to do that. But the question is, does the Board want to do that?
I would hate to put this off for another month, just for these numbers, but...
Yeah.
But we can't keep doing this.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, yeah, this doesn't work. But I agree with Felix. I don't want to hold up an application either, but it's, it puts us, it puts the Board in a difficult spot.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Dominic, can you come up with some wording that would work here?
Well, my suggestion would be, so for instance, if you take the maintenance bond, which would be condition number three, a maintenance bond or security in an amount to be determined acceptable by the Planning Board Conflict Engineer shall be posted and remain in place. So rather than having the specific amount. Yeah. Number two doesn't need to be changed at all. It says that the amount of the bond shall be based on an estimate submitted by the applicant, reviewed and approved by the Planning Board's Engineer, and approved by the Town Board, because the Town Board has a role in connection with that. The maintenance bond and the inspection fee are a little bit more straightforward and can basically, would be under the review of the Engineer in any event, whether we had a number tonight or not.
Yeah, and my understanding is, from looking at the town's fee schedule, you would think the fee schedule would have something more specific in it, but it doesn't. It basically just says, you know, it shall not exceed, it shall be determined by the Planning Board Engineer, but shall not exceed 7% of the total estimated site improvement costs. So again, it's, there's a lot of discretion involved by the Engineer in that. And it's basically, you know, a reasonable estimate on how much inspection is going to be required for a specific project. So maybe the Planning Board at some point might want to recommend that the Town Board look at some of these provisions in the fee schedule and, I won't say make them more reasonable, but make them a little bit more workable.
Is it in the fee schedule? Is it in the code?
Well, it's in the code, but there's a reference in the fee schedule to that same wording that's in the code. Yeah. Interesting, right?
Mm-hmm. Very.
So I guess if, for numbers three and four, if we added that same wording that Dominic recommended to be determined as acceptable to the Town Conflict Engineer instead of having the dollar amount, we could do it that way.
As long as it's understood that in the future, it would be good to have these numbers in front of us. You know, we read this before the public, and nobody's going to see this number. You know, it's going to be, I mean, somebody could foil it, of course, but I mean, you know, I think it's important that these numbers be known.
I'm going to, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm going to need to see the number because it's going to be conditioned when John signs the site plan, so site inspection usually is.
Yeah. And just then, as an aside, on the maintenance bond, when you look at what the maintenance bond really is supposed to cover, it's supposed to cover the landscape to ensure that the landscaping improvements and plantings installed or maintained in a vigorous growing condition. So that's basically just taking the estimate from the applicant for landscaping improvements and just reinserting that particular part of the estimate into this section.
Correct.
So...
Again, just to piggyback on Anthony, just like normally with, like the maintenance bond, they would have a number and, but we would either agree or disagree with that number, you know. So I just, I think, I'm fine with doing it this way today, but it'd be nice if we could have these next time.
Yeah. I agree with all that. Oh, and then, under number five, below that, compliance with the seeker measures, we need to insert June 8th, 2023 as the date where the neg deck was authorized.
And up on, up on top, I think the second page, you have to insert that also.
Right.
Yes. Thanks. Well, with, with those revisions, would somebody like to make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the proposed 1556 Route 52 and 1562 Route 52 Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit as reviewed and revised tonight and authorize the Chair to sign it?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second? Second. That was Bob. Thanks. And any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Oh, one abstention. Okay, so that passes six. In favor, none opposed, one abstention. Okay, so we have one more resolution. That's for the Flood Plane Development Permit. That's going to be a little bit simpler.
Yes. So this is the second resolution that we prepared. Obviously, this ties into the resolution which just was adopted by the Board, including the negative declaration as well tonight. The special conditions are fairly straightforward. All work shall be conducted in accordance with the approved plans in the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. They also have to obtain coverage under the New York State Speedy's General Permit for Stormwater Discharges. They shall also employ the services of a licensed professional engineer to conduct periodic inspections during the course of all work within the area of a special flood hazard. And they shall, and the engineer shall also certify to the Town of Fishkill that the work has been conducted in full conformance with the terms and conditions outlined herein. Number four, the project sponsor shall submit to the Town of Fishkill as-built drawings once work is complete. Number five, Town of Fishkill reserves the right to rescind or otherwise withdraw approval for the permit in the event that the project sponsor fails to conduct or complete the work required. And number six, the Planning Board authorizes the Building Inspector to act on its behalf as a local administrator going forward and to conduct periodic inspections throughout the period of placement of fill and site stabilization to monitor compliance. This tracks other, the conditions and format of other flood plane development permits that have been issued by the Planning Board.
And I think on page two, there would be dates to fill in. The second, the second whereas would be the neg deck on June 8th, 2023. And the fifth whereas, the date we just adopted the resolution of preliminary conditional final approval was also June 8th, 2023. Any questions or comments on this one?
No.
All right. Do you have any questions on that?
No questions.
All right. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of approval for the Flood Plane Development Permit for this proposal as reviewed and revised tonight and authorize the Chair to sign it?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
I second.
Robbie seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven, zero. I think we did it.
All right. Thank you. Once we get the additional approvals and everything back together, we'll be back in just a minute.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
All right. You too. Thank you.
Hey, good night.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Okay, the next project review. And, yeah, here comes Mr. Bodendorf back in the room. This is the Asefi Lot Line Realignment Board to review the submission made by the applicant on May 24th, 2023, a draft resolution of conditional final approval and to consider its adoption. Welcome back, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Good evening.
So the applicants have submitted the revised materials requested by the Board. Do you want to just real quickly go over what the revisions and updates were?
Absolutely. So on the environmental assessment form, we're to change our answer for question 38 to zero, to change our answer on question 128 to yes, and to change our answer on question 15 to yes for the Indiana Bat. For the plan revision, as per 13247D2, the following will be required. This, I actually believe, we did not add. We were to add to the data table listing the name of any school, fire, or special districts and zoning designation parcels. I do believe that, unfortunately, my survey did leave that out. We're to add a zoning, to the zoning table listing the required lot area and bulk requirements of zoning, district demonstrating the compliance, proposed lot configuration, with all lot area and bulk requirements, including road footage. Lot sizes must be shown in square feet and acres. Change the scale of the map from one to 400. And then, as per 13247, sorry, glasses here, 1474, we have added to the plan following the location of the existing sewers on-site, sewage treatment systems, water mains, or on-site wells, culverts, driveways, and drains on the property with pipe sizes, grades, grades and directions for it, existing contours with intervals of five feet or less, and then the names and addresses of tax identification numbers of all the adjacent property owners.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Bodendorf, can you briefly summarize your memo from June 6th?
Yeah. As he mentioned, we had previously requested that, that data table, including the name of any school, fire, or special districts be added to the plan. So that remains outstanding. They revised the utility easement as requested. It appears to be acceptable, so we're just asking that they now provide the required legal document and meets and bounds description so that we can finalize that. And they'll have to submit proposed deeds for the revised lots, all three revised lots. And, but other than that, they're, they've addressed everything else, and they're in good shape.
Any questions from Board members? Looks pretty straightforward. So we do have another draft resolution of conditional final approval. Dominic, if you could go through that quickly?
Sure. The draft that you should have is draft number two. It's dated June 1st, 2023. The first couple of pages, it looks like the page numbers are... The first couple of pages, and it looks like the page numbers are right on this one. And that's a, it's an auto text feature in, in Microsoft Word, and so sometimes it catches and sometimes it doesn't. So my apologies for that. In any event, the findings that are set forth in Town Code and Subdivision Code 15079 regarding lot line adjustments are set forth as findings within this resolution. And then there are a number of conditions. The first condition is, is that the owner's consent block shall be signed and dated by the owners. The second condition is, is that the approval block for the planning board will be added to the proposed final plat for chairman's signature. The third condition is, is that, as Mr. Bodendorf mentioned, that the applicants shall submit the deeds, together with meets and bounds descriptions, for the actual transfers of property between the various lots, which will be submitted for both the engineer and the attorney's review. And then they have to be obviously recorded as well. Number four is, is that there's also deeds where the land that's being conveyed is then combined with the existing properties themselves. So it's basically a consolidation deed that has to be submitted with meets and bounds descriptions there. So that makes sure that any future owners get the whole enchilada, for lack of a better term, than, than anything that might be confused as a result of this lot line change. Number five is standard condition that the applicant shall reimburse the town for its costs associated with the review of the plat. And then there's the standard conditions such as, you know, filing the plat within 62 days that it's signed and, and all the other technical requirements for the submission of the, the final plat and proof of its filing.
All right. Any questions from board members on that? Pretty straightforward?
No.
No. All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of conditional final approval for the Asepi Lot Line realignment as reviewed tonight and authorize the chair to sign it.
So moved.
Anthony moves that.
Second.
Felix seconds it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven zero. Okay.
All right, thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you. All right. Project reviews, we're back to Duchess Storage, formerly known as Cube Smart Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on May 24th, 2023. Welcome back. So do you want to just give us a real quick, you already did kind of summarize some of the major things that were done at the public hearing, but if you want to go over anything else?
I think, just to reiterate what Nick had mentioned earlier, we did, I reached out to Cassandra Bibbo at the DOT to get an idea what the conceptual plan was for the roundabout, which I believe was a comment the county made. At, at that time, she said the, the, there is a conceptual plan. It is very conceptual. If this project is to go, it would go in 2025. We did discuss the sidewalk and it is, they have not made a decision as to where they would want a sidewalk, if they would want a sidewalk there at all. One of the issues that I think we need to talk about this evening is, on the originally approved plan, there was an emergency access that was on the east side of the property and it accessed actually 52. So if you look at the conceptual plan, which I'm not sure the board has had preview to, that's not going to be possible to be able to get that access out of there because it will be right in the exit lane of the proposed roundabout. So we did look at the site to determine whether there was another location to put it, but I don't think it would serve the need. It's definitely something we got, we have to talk about if, if they choose to move forward with this roundabout. But again, this is conceptual, so my proposal would be, we're going to leave it where we propose it now, in the event that when we seek the DOT permit, we'll, we'll be negotiating with them, as Nick had mentioned earlier, as to any of the improvements that they want to see or do. We don't think, even if they did a sidewalk, it would encroach on our property because there's plenty of room where they have intended to place it, so we don't think it would affect us. But again, it's, it's just a concept and so.
Quick question. I don't know if you can answer it, but do you know if the Duchess County Transportation Council's Transportation Improvement Program actually has such a, you know, project proposal for a roundabout listed in there?
I don't, I really don't know.
Yeah, I, I looked through it and I could not see anything because that would be a pretty expensive project, I would think.
Yeah, I don't, I, the one I had seen that Cassandra had forwarded to me actually resembles the, the one at the, near the airport. It's very small, as you can imagine. It, it may affect the statue that's there now. There's no survey that actually shows where that is now, but that, that roundabout takes up a pretty good chunk of that rectangle, or excuse me, that triangle. So that may be, you know, again, that's stuff that we're going to have to resolve, but the plan we saw was very conceptual.
Interesting. Yeah, I was just looking through some of the revisions in the plan. I saw that the lighting plan was updated to reduce lighting levels to not exceed 0.1 foot candles at the property lines. We'll still need to see sign details prior to final site plan approval.
So if I may, with respect to signage, we don't have a confirmed tenant yet, so similar to what the board did in 2017, we would recognize it would be a requirement that when we do have the specific signage, we would come back to get approval through your code process. We've indicated that we would expect to have one building sign and one, you know, street sign.
Yeah.
And that's what we anticipate, but we're not in a position to provide details.
So yeah, I think, you know, as you were mentioning, the one thing that I think we'll be very interested in continuing discussions with the state DOT on the possibility of a sidewalk in that area somehow, somewhere. Because that's, that was a very important part of the comprehensive plan update for improving pedestrian circulation and amenities, really along all of that eastern part of Route 52. Let's see, so yeah, as you had mentioned, we, so this was classified as a type one action under seeker at the May meeting. I think the, the notice of intent went out on June 1st, actually, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah. So the 30-day time period for that will expire July 2nd or thereabouts. Which will be after, which will be before our next planning board meeting.
Correct.
Yep. Well, let me see if the other board members have any questions or comments at this point.
I do not right now.
No, I don't have any comments.
No questions.
All right, so we just held and kept the public hearing open on this, basically just to make sure that we were able to include or incorporate any comments that we might get from involved or interested agencies. However, it still might be appropriate to have our consultants at CPL draft seeker documents for the July 13th meeting so that they could be ready if things moved appropriately. John, what do you think about that?
Yeah, as, as we've done in the past, it doesn't hurt to have it ready and if, for whatever reason, there's an issue, the board does not have to adopt it.
Dominic, what do you think?
I concur.
What do board members think?
Yeah. I agree.
All right. Can we have a motion by the board to authorize CPL to prepare a draft EAF parts two and three and a draft determination of environmental significance for the board's consideration at the July 13th meeting?
So moved.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second? Joe, he seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Well, I was thinking, there are going to be some more details that are going to be needed before we go on to a final site plan approval, but we might be able to authorize a preliminary site plan approval to consider at the July 13th meeting. Again, that would be contingent on all these other things falling into place, but what do you think about doing that, Dominic?
I think John Bodendorf is very wise that you can always have it to review and if it's not ready, for whatever reason, then it's not ready.
And I think if we do go to a preliminary site plan approval, that would get, you know, move things along pretty well and probably give a better opportunity to have some clout with DOT, for instance, to actually start working on details.
We appreciate that consideration.
All right, so if it's okay with the board, is there a motion to authorize Dominic to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary site development plan, which would also include the special use permit approval for the board's possible consideration at the July 13th meeting?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. All right, so I think we have some work to do and to get us ready for the July 13th meeting.
I'd like to ask the board, is it possible that our office deal directly with John and some of his comments, just so we don't take the board's side?
Sure. I don't know if we had pre-authorized that previously, but in case we didn't, why don't we get a, such authorization from the board to authorize our engineer to talk with the applicant's engineer?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, a friendly amendment if necessary for, to speak with the planning board attorney as well.
All right, we'll add that to it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely not. No.
All right, we'll scratch that. No, we'll, we'll add that onto there. I think if, if somebody would like to make a motion for, for our consultants to meet with their consultants.
Yes.
Anthony moves that.
And I'll second it.
All right, Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. All right.
Thank you very much. We'll see you July 13th.
Okay, thanks. See you then.
No cookies for you.
Okay, moving back to West Edge Self-Storage Site Development Plan, board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on May 24th, 2023. Welcome again.
So Kylie Hearn with LaBelle again. I had given you guys a quick summary of the updates from the last meeting prior to the public hearing. So I don't really have anything else to add at this, at this time, but yeah, we'll be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
All right. Let's see. I think we, do we have a CPL memo? I can't seem to find mine here.
Yep.
Yeah. What happened to my CPL memo?
Went with the first round.
Yeah. Well, that's okay. Why don't you just go through it?
Okay.
Oh, I found it. Okay, thanks.
Shall I proceed?
Yes, please, John.
Okay. Yeah, our memo dated June 7th. First thing I'd like to point out is, under general, comment six should, should have been deleted. I, I overlooked that, so they do not need to gain written approval from the county. The county is leaving it up to the board to make their own determination, so strike that comment. The other comments under general are, we basically discussed already. The only one of any significance is the one having to do with the health department, but given that, the gentleman who made the initial comments is retiring, I don't know how that's going to shake out. We've, we've asked for a meeting from the, the town side because they, they have some issues with, apparently with what the town did in the past, but they haven't responded to our request yet, so hopefully that doesn't hold this project up. I don't think it should. I don't think that would be fair, but we'll see how that shakes out. On the plans, there's really, you know, these are all very minor comments that, that we've provided here and same with the SWIP. There's just one tiny typo that they need to, to fix, so from our perspective, they're in good shape with their submission.
All right. Any comments or questions from board members?
Do we, a letter mentioned, referenced the chief's determination of acceptance on the, from the fire chief for a roundabout? Was anything in writing ever?
Yes, so the letter was submitted from the chief saying that he reviewed the latest plan and he's comfortable with it.
Okay, was that, maybe I missed it. Was it part of?
That, that came in not this.
That was two submissions.
Two submissions ago.
I'm swimming in paper and it's all self-storage, so.
That's one thing about these self-storage units. You put it in there and you forget about it.
Easy enough for me to ask the question.
All right. I actually have no additional comments myself either. Any questions from Dominic?
Yes, sir.
Or comments?
Yes, sir.
So we, yeah, we held the public hearing and closed that one tonight. So are we ready to ask CPL to prepare draft seeker documents, EAF parts one and two, and neg deck for the board's discussion and consideration at the July 13th meeting? What do board members think? And then I'll go over to our consultants and ask their opinion.
Yes, I think we're ready.
And I think we're going to have a busy meeting on July 13th with a lot of, a lot of paperwork. Dominic, what do you think about that?
I agree.
That we have a lot of work to do. And John, are you, yeah, we don't want to give you too many things to do to get ready for the meeting, but then again, these, it's kind of time to move some of these projects along.
I, I agree.
So, all right, would someone like to make a motion to authorize CPL to prepare draft EAF parts two and three and a draft determination of environmental significance on this application for the board's consideration at the July 13th meeting?
So moved.
Felix moves it, is there a second?
I second.
Robbie seconds it, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven, zero. All right, and again, the follow-up question is then, Dominic, do you think it would be appropriate to, for you to prepare a draft resolution of, perhaps this one too should be for preliminary site development plan approval at this point?
This, this project requires variances from the zone of board of appeals, so that's a process that has to be undertaken and completed and could very well, you know, involve some element of plan changes as that process unfolds, so.
And I think they'll also, the applicant will also need the floodplain development permit, which we don't necessarily need if we're doing preliminary approval, so we can do that as a follow-up afterwards, right?
That makes sense.
What does the board think? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to authorize Dominic Cordisco to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary site development plan approval for the board's consideration at the July 13th meeting?
You got it, so moved.
Anthony moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Do you have any other questions for us at this point?
I do not.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
All right, next project review is SK LJ Inc. Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, forward to review the application and supporting documentation that was accepted and referred at the May 11th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. Welcome back, Mr. Burns.
Good evening.
So maybe just give us a quick reminder of what this application is about.
The, the application is for a site plan and special use permit for mainly the construction of a 55 by 80 addition to the existing garage and with outdoor storage, and also part of the, part of the site redevelopment will be renovating an existing residential structure on the site for, to be used as a dwelling, a single-family dwelling. The site's located in 125 Old Route 9, and it's, it's sandwiched in between Route 9 and Old Route 9 in the area of splashdown. There's, there's minimal site disturbance, we plan to, minimal lighting, and we are trying to keep everything pretty much as minimal as possible. The store, the outdoor storage is slated towards, you know, people storing boats and motor homes and travel trailers and that sort of thing. We propose a wooden fence around the perimeter of the property, well, the usable area of the property, a lot of, you know, about half of the property is, is fairly steep and along Route 9, and we're just going to leave that, that portion of the property alone. We have some, some parking for, that's located around, generally around the addition, the garage addition here, we have some parking, this area here up front, we propose some screening, so, some trees, there's, there's actually some natural screening, if you look right in this area here, there's a, there's a rock, a rock outcropping that provides natural screening from Old Route 9 to the, the rear portion of the parcel. And there's, there's additional parking over on the, on the south side of the parcel, which will serve for the, for the residential, the residential building there.
All right, John, do you want to summarize your memo of June 6th?
With respect to SEAKER, there are a couple minor items that need to be completed in the EAF, but otherwise, it's in pretty good shape, and we also believe that this is a type-two action, subject to Dominic's concurrence. On the plans, I'm not going to go through every single one of these comments because some of them are, are just simple housekeeping items, but in their EF, they indicate that the hours of operation will be 24/7, so the board should determine if that's appropriate. The zoning schedule needs to be expanded per comment number five. The existing septic system, is that, is this the project where you tried to locate the, the system and couldn't, or do you know?
I, I have a general idea where the, where the septic system is.
Okay, if you could just, you know, indicate, it, it doesn't have to be perfect, just some kind of box so we know you're not building over it.
Okay.
They need to add an 88 compliant parking space, and, let's see, two spaces are required for the single-family home, if there are spaces proposed to be designated only for the residential use, that should be indicated on the plan. They, they, they are proposing some outdoor storage, and they're proposing a six-foot tall wooden fence as a means of screening, the board should determine if this is adequate, and in addition to that, the detail shows a wooden fence, but on the photometric plan, it's called out as a final fence, so please clarify that on the next submission. Also, the lighting plan that was submitted, we need something more clear, we couldn't read the light levels on the plan that was submitted. Any proposed grading that's going to be done around the, the storage building and parking area should be shown. Got to add an erosion control plan for any of the, for any grading proposed. One of the buildings, the, the call-out references, an 80 by 40 building, but it, the dimensions show 55 by 80, so just clarify that. Provide an elevation for the building's finished floor, and then, is there a well on site, or are you going to connect to?
There, there is a well on site.
Okay, just, just make that clear on the plan, that that's the intent to continue to use that, and then they'll need DOT approval of the revised site entrances, and DOT's going to ask this as well, they, they should add site distance measurements to the plan. That's...
The, the entrances are actually going to be existing, but I mean, we could, we'll take care of getting them legalized.
Oh, you're not making any adjustments to the, to the entrances?
No, both, both entrances are, are existing.
Okay, well, I think for the, for the record, it would be prudent to, to add what the, the site distance is in that location, so.
Okay.
Isn't, I thought Old Route 9 was a town road, as opposed to a state road? I know it used to be partly like the main...
Yeah, you're right, this is, this is not subject to DOT approval, so let me strike that comment.
Thanks.
Anyway, site distance measurements should still be shown.
Yeah, just reviewed by a different entity. I know John had flagged the hours of operation question in the memo, and I just wanted to see if the planning board had any thoughts on this being a 24/7 type of operation. Something we could think about and talk about more, but it is something we should probably address at some point.
The, the, when I was filling out the EAF, there's, there's a couple uses here, we don't intend to operate in office to have people come in and out of there with, to get their storage 24/7, but there's residential uses that are going to be there, that are going to be there 24/7, so I, I mean, if, if you want me to change it, I could change it.
I think, yeah, I, I think there are going to be some additional EAF corrections, as John had mentioned, so maybe while you're doing it, you could just clarify that those different uses have different, different use characteristics, different operational characteristics.
Okay.
That way it'll avoid confusion.
Yeah, that, if, if you make that change to the EAF, that comment goes away.
And also, John brought up the question of outdoor storage requiring suitable screening from streets on adjoining properties, so applicant is proposing a six-foot tall wooden fence as the means of screening, I guess we as the board need to determine if that's adequate, or if there needs to be anything else, like perhaps some, you know, evergreens that will grow above the fence to provide a little bit of additional visual buffer.
I mean, I was going to make the comment in a few minutes about questioning whether the landscaping plan was sufficient enough, seemed a little sparse from, from my standpoint, but I know, John, you're much more of a landscape, architecture enthusiast than I am, so I was hoping maybe you could speak to that, but it did feel like along the frontage and as well along the, along the side property lines, that it was a little sparse, but also this is where a public hearing would, would come in handy as well, to get input from adjoining neighbors as to whether or not, you know, it's currently sufficient and what could be done to make it sufficient.
Yeah, I was actually going to comment further in that regard, basically thinking that maybe some additional landscaping and screening facing Old Route 9 might be appropriate, and definitely we need to see a more detailed, worked-out landscaping plan, so that would be the opportunity to see if there can be some, you know, some evergreen plantings along with the fence.
I mean, I think the plan provided is a good start, but certainly some, another look at the vegetation along the property line and in the frontage would be good, and I guess I'd just see what the public thinks when we get to the public hearing, I, I'd be very curious to hear if anybody has any thoughts on it.
Yeah. What else, any other thoughts from board members? I think at the last meeting, I, and you mentioned the bedrock outcropping, Steve, that...
Yes.
That, that should be shown on the plan. Lighting, of course.
I was looking for a picture of the, if I, if there was a picture that represented the, showed the rock outcropping itself, and it actually, in the picture that's showing there, it's behind the...
It's behind that.
Behind the building.
Yeah, but just, actually just locating it on the plan is always helpful.
I could, I could just add a, I could add a link right to the, to the existing conditions plan right here.
Yeah. And of course, any lighting that's going to be added to the site will have to be fully shielded as per town code requirements. Also, I, although these, the building, the buildings that are going to be either newly built or renovated are going to be fairly basic, but any, any architectural details you can provide in terms of building materials, colors, et cetera, would be needed.
Okay, I can get the, the material, it's a... Okay, I'll, I'll find out more about the, the finishes to the, to the building.
Okay. Let's see, we also got a letter from Dutchess County Planning on their GML referral response, and they determined this application to be incomplete, lacking details that are outlined in the letter. They, they, they brought up some interesting points, one regarding use, that the proposed use of the property is a little bit unclear, because there's, you know, a lot of different things proposed or going on, on the site, so, and they also brought up the question about hours of operation, so if we, I think if you can take the opportunity, maybe in the EAF itself, or in a supplemental narrative, just to further clarify how this property's going to be used, you know, what it will be like weekends and holidays. They talk about lighting and a photometric plan was included, but it, I think, John, you might have mentioned this too, that the photometric plan isn't really readable in terms of what it's supposed to be showing, so that needs to be updated, corrected. And the county also talks about landscaping and the need for some supplemental landscaping added to the site. So, let's see, what else? Oh, I was going to bring up the SEAKER question that I had in my mind, so the CPL memo suggests that this could be classified as a type-two action under SEAKER, citing in particular section 617.5C9, which includes as type-two actions, construction or expansion of a primary or accessory non-residential structure or facility involving less than 4,000 square feet of gross floor area. But, the proposed addition, and I, I need you to again confirm this, Steve, is described and labeled as 4,400 square feet in your cover letter, on the site plan, and in the elevation drawings, and showing it as dimensions of 80 by 55, which is 4,400 square foot. Yet, the addition is incorrectly labeled as 3,200 square feet on one part of the site plan, and incorrectly stated as 3,200 square feet in the application form. So, Steve, can you confirm whether that storage addition is proposed at 4,400 square feet?
Forty-four hundred.
Yeah, if so, I think the proposed action would be below the 4,000 square foot threshold for type-two actions, and would have to be classified as an unlisted action. So, I think we're going to need some corrections and additions to, you know, a number of things like the EAF and the site plan, and the landscaping plan, and the lighting plan redone. So I don't, I would say we shouldn't even classify this action yet until we get all the updated materials, we're getting a revised EAF, there should be revisions to the plan, so I think probably, you know, the next step forward would be to, to get these corrections made, get the updates put in that we've been talking about, and then I think we can classify the action as unlisted at the next, you know, the next time we're talking about it. the next time we're talking about it. Does that sound like a plan?
Makes sense.
Yep.
All right. That's about all I had.
Anybody do anything else?
So, yeah, we look forward to seeing corrected and more detailed revised plans. Submission date for the July 13th meeting is June 28th.
Is, is there anything, any areas specifically that, besides the road frontage there, that you would like to see more landscaping?
Well, I think there probably are going to be more opportunities. You know, like you said, on the back portion of the site, there is woods and a steep slope going down to Route 9, but there, I think the photographs you showed, looking up from Route 9, does show, you know, some possible, you know, gaps, especially when there are no leaves on the trees in that wooded area. So you might want to think about adding some more along, kind of along that back boundary if there are opportunities.
That's mostly yours.
I don't know, Anthony, did you have any other places where you
I was really most concerned about the frontage, because that, that was first two photos really just very, very sparse. You see, you see the chain link fence.
Yeah, there's the, there's the photo that I was mentioning of the shot from Route 9.
Would you prefer to have the landscaping inside the fence or outside the fence?
Well, this is going to be a wooden fence that you're proposing, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess if there's room to put it outside the fence, it always makes it a little bit more attractive, as long as it's, you know, within the property boundaries. And that would probably be especially true for the frontage on old Route 9.
Really, the, there's limited vision from Route 9. Like, you're really, you have, there's, it's a really small window that you can look through, because if you're headed northbound, the, the, it's right after a huge rock outcropping. It has the, I think a gym building on top of it. And heading south, I, you know, I pulled up to the side of the road in a, in a, in green, next to the marsh there to take this picture.
Yeah, I think I'd be more concerned with the frontage on old, old Route 9 also.
Okay. And just, you know, on the south side of the property, there's also a, a building that's very close to the property line. No one knows. Just, I don't know, just that side as well. Royal Hill property, the road to is to the park.
Yeah, so some, see if you can fit in some more landscaping along that property.
Got it.
Okay.
All good here?
Good. All right, we look forward on seeing you again.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, you too. All right. So are we actually? Make sure I'm in the right place. So we are now ready to go with Basis Industrial Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit Board to review the application and supporting documentation that was accepted and referred at the May 11, 2023 Planning Board Meeting and submission made by the applicant's representative on May 24th, 2023. And again, I'll just reiterate at the beginning of this one, that I live in one of the neighborhoods off of Brockway, about a half mile from the project site, but don't believe that I have any conflict of interest or anything like that in reviewing this proposal, and I believe I can remain objective, so I plan on continuing on this review, and I do not plan to recuse myself. So, welcome back. There's a good bit to go through, so why don't we get started and give us kind of your update and overview on what this application is about and describe the new materials that you did submit.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. George Alcindrados from Keenan Bean were project attorneys on the project. With me tonight, I have Anthony Scavo from Basis Industrial, I have Chris Michalek from SGW Architecture, and I have Jackie Giordano from Insight Engineering. We are, I could run you guys through the, the general background of the project again, like I did last time, super quick, it's
Yeah, just real briefly.
Yeah, real brief, because I know we reviewed it last time, and it was the, the long agenda item last time as well. The, we propose to create basically three new buildings on the property. One building is about a 90,000-square-foot climate-controlled self-storage facility, three stories. The other one is a 3,190-square-foot, one-story fast-food facility, and then there's also a proposed about 3,500-square-foot, one-story car wash that is accessory to the existing gas station on the property. The property currently has a restaurant, has some residential outparcels in the back, it, it has a gas station with a convenience store, trucking, contractor's yard. So in total, the property is 24 and a half acres, but right now, we're only focused on developing the, as I said last time, we say the front portion, it's really the northern, northwestern portion of the, of the property. It's the GB portion, because the property is split, has R15 and GB. We're focused on the GB portion right now. The R15 portion, which is the back of the property, let's call it, it contains various outparcels that we have to deal with and figure out, you know, acquisition of title and things like that, so there's not necessarily a plan for that portion yet. With that being said, I wanted to clarify that because we were obviously in receipt of the Dutchess County Planning Memo and the CPL Memo, and, you know, a fair amount of comments concern the rear portion of the property, so I just wanted to make it clear that we're focused on that GB portion, and we can pull up a, a drawing here that sort of shows what that looks like on the property with the split zone line, if it's easier to understand that way, but we just wanted to clarify that in the future, when we figure out what's going on with the back, there will be a plan for development, and we will obviously come back and we'll have the SEACER review. We're not looking to circumvent SEACER whatsoever, but right now, the plan in front of us is for that front portion, that's the feasible plan, that's what we desire to do right now, so to that extent, a lot of the comments we could address for the front portion. The rear portion, we just don't know exactly what's going on right now.
Do you want to pull that up on the
Yes.
On the slides?
So, and let me zoom in a little here. So just as a very general aerial of the property, it's, this is Route 9D down here. This is the GB portion, the front, it's, it's split right along that, that blue line there. This is the R15 portion in the back. All of the development, and I'll, I'll switch to another PDF that sort of zooms in on the proposed development, but the development is just in this portion right here. This is where there are outparcels, this is what I keep saying, we have to sort of figure out what's going on with those outparcels in terms of acquiring title, in terms of what the feasible plan is in the future. But right now, what, what's in front of us is this front portion here, which I believe, yes, this is a, and let me close these on the side here, so it's easier to see. If I could zoom in just a little bit for you guys. This is what's proposed right now. Oh, sorry. This is the self-storage facility. This orange building right here is the fast-food facility. The gas station to remain is over here in this bottom corner, and this is the car wash that's, that's part of the gas station. This is entirely on the GB portion, there's no, no intrusion onto the R15 portion. Route 9D on the bottom, you know, the, the parking lots and all that, we, you know, I have the consultants here, they could walk you through any questions you may have in detail on this, but I just wanted to get that out there at the beginning, because the CPL memo obviously could be a little overwhelming when you first look at it, I think it's 60 comments or something like that, not more.
And we're going to go through every single one of them.
Yeah. To save everyone time. No, yeah, so that's why, I just wanted to clarify, the, the comments that have to do with the rear portion, I, I don't want to get repetitive, but we really don't know what's going on there. But if we want to talk about the front portion, we want to focus on the environmental impact there, absolutely, we're ready for that. The rear portion, when we come back in the future with a plan, absolutely going to go through SEACER, absolutely going to go through on the environmental, you know, issues at that point. And with that being said, we're obviously here to answer whatever questions you have, whether on the memo, whether on, you know, the renderings here. The original submission had obviously the site plan, which we could pull up and everything. Our second submission had some architecturals that I had up at the beginning, the, the renderings, and then we have this sort of overlay here, just to make it easier to understand where the buildings are, added some color, and that's a general overview of the area.
Well, as you mentioned, we do have a memo from CPL, and it's kind of a combined memo. We have Liz Axelson with us tonight to help us with some of the planning and zoning and SEACER aspects of it, and then we have the engineering aspects, as we usually do have with John Bodendorf, and we also have some transportation-related comments mixed in there, provided by CPL's traffic engineer, David Hastings. So, well, welcome, Liz. Do you want to start us off with?
Can I, can I just start real quick?
Okay.
I'm going to have Liz take the lead on both this application and the next application, because the engineering comments, in my opinion, are, are pretty straightforward. I don't think we need to go through them, since this is your initial submission tonight. With respect to the traffic comments, I, I'm not going to go through those either. Similar to previous projects along this corridor, DOT is ultimately the approving agency, however, we do expect them to also address our traffic comments, but I'm going to turn it over to Liz and have her take you through a summary of the zoning and SEACER-related comments.
Sounds good.
And, and before, I'm sorry to cut you off, I want to clarify, I may have said Jackie Giordano's with Insight, I meant Dynamic Engineering, just in case I said that, I don't want any confusion saying, why are we switching, what plans were you guys looking at? If I said that, if I misspoke, that's my mistake, and I apologize to you, Jackie. With that being said, yeah.
Okay. All right. So my name is Liz Axelson, I'm a planner, AICP with CPL, and I did write quite a few of these comments, but Megan Stone was also involved, she's another planner at our office. And, you know, I, I guess I could say the first couple pages really were about where are these lot lines, how, how do they, if they do coincide with the GB zoning district? It's just, it would be helpful to have it be clearer on the plans. I understand that you want to do the development of the GB first. I guess I have a little concern, and maybe I'll have a conversation with Planning Board Attorney at some point, Dominic, about whether we have any segmentation concerns. Without getting too specific, I know that I raised the issue of that there are dwellings, from what I can read from the tax parcels, in the back, and there is an existing access that appears to be, provide them access, Pappas Lane, I believe? And so, you know, there are going to be some elements of the residential, existing residential and possible future residential development in the back that you'll need to accommodate now, just to make sure that there's access, to make sure that's not being closed off, and, you know, I would suggest, you know, that having just some kind of an easement over a commercial property, in my mind, doesn't feel sufficient in terms of if people have permanent homes back there. I think it should be, you know, secure for them to continue living back there, if that's, if that's part of the plan, but that is a concern.
So do we know if Pappas Lane is a town road?
I really don't know, it was really kind of hard to tell from the tax mapping, honestly.
Do you know whether it's a, a private road or a town road? I mean, it's at a signalized intersection, so one would think at least the beginning part of it must be a town road.
It, it might be the case, I'm not 100% sure. Pappas Lane, obviously, as you very well point out, the beginning part is, let's say, developed, as you go further and further into the property, my understanding is it's sort of, no pun intended, it gets in the weeds a little bit in the, in the back.
Yeah. Well, so I guess that's one thing we should point out.
And the property line shown on the figure kind of makes it unclear as to whether or not it's privately owned or not.
On this figure, yeah.
Yeah.
We have other, I'm not exactly sure what we have, but I might be able to.
And while you're looking, I'll just mention that I think a number of the comments I've seen from CPL and probably the county as well, do talk about that, that access point from Pappas Lane for the gas station and serving, you know, the other users, it's going to be problematic, so we really need to figure out how that's going to work the best for the site.
I mean, I think on the positive side, that having some coordinated access points would be good, so we don't have a bunch of businesses with driveways going straight out. I think that's what the board generally prefers, to have some kind of coordinated access points, so you don't have a whole bunch of turning points all along the frontage.
Yes. I think that's what the state would prefer also.
Yeah. So it wasn't really clear to me what I was looking at on the plans in that regard, so that's important to know. Let's see. And then, when I was looking at the full EAF, it looked like a site had been drawn. I guess the confusion here is, I know there's a GB zoning district line. I don't know whether it coincides or not with parcel lines, it's very difficult to tell from the mapping. So it would be helpful if that was a little more clear, you know, what's the zone line and does the zone line cut parcels in half? And then when I got into, I have a lot of EAF questions, so I won't go into those right now, but what I tried to do, beginning on page six, is to go through some of the general concerns, and that includes, again, clearly and consistently showing us on the map and telling us in, in your narrative about the project, what is the area? And whether there are issues with parcel lines that have to be dealt with, and so I tried to point out a number of key code items. It's, looks like you will need some variances, I'm looking at comment 13 for building height, floor area ratio, parking spaces, loading spaces, et cetera. But one of the things I'm pointing out is that it looks like, given the coverage requirement 75%, that you could have a lower building with a bigger footprint and not need a height variance, and I think that that is an adjustment worth making.
Absolutely, we could look into that and see what's feasible, absolutely.
And, and one of the ways that this board and also the town has been looking at this area in general is, we just completed a comprehensive plan update, and it is on the website, all three parts of it, and if you, if you go on and take a look at that and look at volume three, you'll find the very first map shows you gateways into the community, and, and this was all decided by a very big and very involved committee that really knows their community. So one of the gateways is more like a gateway corridor, and it kind of starts from, I guess, the intersection of, of 84 the intersection of 84 and 9D at the very southern end of town, and goes all the way up to, what's the road? I'm forgetting the name of the road. Anyway...
Red Schoolhouse Road, I think.
That's right, Red Schoolhouse Road, thank you. So, this is along there. And I know there's a lot of business there, and that's fine, that's a good thing, I think the town encourages that. I think the general idea is to try to present the town's best face there. In other words, make it look nice. There are business areas, it's storage, et cetera, landscaping, nice architecture, those are the kinds of things I think the town is looking for. And so, that's why I kind of picked on the building height, because I thought, why put up an imposing facade when you could have it be a little bit more friendly and more with the scale of architecture in that area?
Understood, and we'll look into it and see whatever's feasible. We want to work with the town, we want to make it better for the town. This is a partnership in that sense, so absolutely.
Okay, that would be good. So, I did point out some general code issues, and then on page seven, I kind of got into the specifics of different things. And one of the things I wanted to point out right away had to do with section 150-33, building lots, a lot for every building. And I did take a look at the zoning district to see if a shopping center was an option, and for some reason, I think it isn't in this zoning district, but that's worth a double check. If it was a shopping center, there are different requirements, but otherwise, it appears you'd need a lot for every one of those buildings. So, then you're going to have an issue with a lot configuration.
We'll certainly look into that and verify if that's how it's written, of course.
And that might help you funnel in where your access points are too, I think. Let's see. The one thing I do like to say to applicants right up front, it's at the bottom of page seven of 12, historic structures and sites is another part of the code. But I always try to say, as soon as possible, I don't know if you've done this already or not, to make a submittal to the New York State Historic Preservation Office, and I don't know, somebody on your team has probably done it. You make a submittal via an online platform called the Cultural Resource Information System, and provide project information. And the reason that's flagged is because the site is known for archaeological sensitivity. So, that, the thing is, when you're working with SHIPO, is that you do a submittal, and they have 30 days to respond. And having been on both sides of that, they really do take 30 days, because they're pretty busy. So, that's why I urge applicants to get started on that process, because more often than not, they're going to ask you to do a Phase 1A and Phase 1B cultural resource investigation. Then you'll have a consultant go do that, and you'll be getting in line, because they're kind of busy right now, too. So, that's why I'm mentioning that now. That's pretty important, just to get started, so that doesn't hold you up in the process.
Absolutely. And I think, I think sort of, that's one of the comments where, I think that's more geared probably toward the rear portion of the property, because the front is already, it's been, it's cleared, there's been development there, so in terms of historical artifacts, or in terms of animals, or whatever the case may be. The portion we're looking to develop, the GB portion, it's already developed to an extent. It's not developed how we would like it, it's not the most beautiful development, but it is developed. It's not woodlands, it's not, you know it's there, it's concrete, and, you know, building's on there. So, with that comment and some of the other comments, that was that little sort of disclosure I just wanted to make at the beginning, why we sort of see, want to clarify that we're focused on the developed portion, we're focusing to redevelop the developed portion of the property, rather than go into the back, cut down a bunch of trees, you know, having to deal with animals that might be there, or species, or historical artifacts, or whatever the case may be. Just wanted to point that out.
And that's fine, it's just, I'll take a second look on the EAF mapper program, once I know the actual project area, it was a little tough to define. And I'll grab it again from that platform, just to make sure, because if it does show up for archaeological sensitivity, between the state requirements and the town's has its own historic regulations, you may not be able to skip that one, so. And it's one of those ones you don't want to start late, because...
Of the delay, yeah.
30 days every time you submit. So, anyway, that one I wanted to point out. And then, I gave you a pretty good laundry list of the code sections that would pertain to you. So, I'm not going to get into the weeds on that. The one thing that you may end up with is some shared parking areas, which I think the town would generally encourage, if people are going to go between the various businesses. But what's nice to see on the plans is some kind of a shared parking table, so you have some kind of an idea. Because nobody wants to see a huge empty parking lot, but we want you to have enough. And then, I guess, at some point, Dominic, maybe you and I could have a chat about segmentation, because I feel very, very concerned about affecting the front and aspects of the front that might affect the usages in the back. Not really fond of segmenting out a big hunk of a parcel that ultimately might be developed, even if it was a matter of, we have a site-specific plan in the front, and a conceptual plan in the back, that's just there for the purpose of making sure we are covering what might happen in the back, with access and other things in the front, so.
I'd be happy to have that conversation, you know. I'm also mindful that an applicant may not have present plans to develop that area, so understanding that it could be built upon in the future, and how that may relate to this development is certainly something that the planning board can look at, you know, but developing a set of plans for speculative development that may or may not occur back there, because there's no present intention to do that, you know, is something that you have to balance.
Okay.
Absolutely. And that's a more well-spoken way of saying what I was trying to say before. It's hard to study the back when we really don't know what's going on there, right? Same with delays, with SHIPO and everything, to put together some sort of speculative plan, it could cause delays for the board, for the applicant, and everything, so. We're willing to work with the town, but it's just, we can't tell you what's going to happen back there until we know what's going to happen back there.
Do you have any engineering things in mind?
I mean, do you want me to go through a few of the comments? I'm happy to.
If there are any that you think would stand out, that should be...
Like I said, I mean, they submitted a SWIP, and we only had a couple comments on that. Let me get to the engineering. I got it. And a lot of it is just reiterating, you know, the need for outside regulatory approvals, providing counts for any retaining walls that are greater than four feet high. Clarifying whether they plan to make a sewer connection via open cut or directional drill, things like that, that really don't necessarily apply to the planning board, per se. And, let's see.
Well, but it is kind of a town-wide, you know, question.
Right.
I thought, that stood out to me as a pretty significant one, to make sure we get that figured out.
Right. And, again, the traffic comments, I believe, are relatively straightforward. And again, the DOT ultimately will be the approving agency for their traffic study, but we provided comments, and we expect that they're going to be similar to the comments they received from DOT.
Yeah, I thought especially the comments on traffic that dealt with that two-way left-turning lane is a big issue that we really need to figure out.
Yeah, that and site circulation, but...
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think first it would help to have a clearer sense of, you know, the site outline and all that, so it's very clear.
Also, getting back to, I think, some of your comments on SEACRA, Liz, one of the things you brought up was whether this could or should be classified as a Type 1 action. Do you want to talk a little bit more about that? And I had some other additional thoughts on it. But we probably want to figure that out maybe tonight. If we can figure it out, we might want to classify it.
The thing about trying to figure it out is, has to do with a clearer sense of the project area. Hang on, I'm trying to find that comment.
Yeah, let's see.
Hang on.
It was before all the detailed EAF comments, I think. Yeah, it was on page three.
Oh, here we go, bottom of page three.
Yeah.
You want me to just read this one out loud?
Sure.
So, this one is comment number nine at the bottom of page three. Subject to discussion with the Planning Board Attorney, the proposed action could be classified as a Type 1 action, in accordance with the SEACRA regulations at 617.4B10. And this is because Duchess Stadium is adjacent to the project site, and it is a Duchess County park. And so, that section of SEACRA says that if you're adjacent to a publicly-owned park, I'm paraphrasing here, that all the thresholds are a little different for development. So, I think it'd be worth it to work through the numbers on that as soon as possible.
Absolutely. That's what I, I believe it says something about 25% thresholds and stuff like that.
25% of the thresholds, and one of the thresholds is 10 acres, and...
Yeah, so that's something we would obviously look at. I don't know if it's possible to make that determination at this meeting right now. We want to take a look at the plans, how they work, how SEACRA, what it says and all that, so.
Yeah.
But that comment's definitely noted.
Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that one out, Jonathan.
Yeah.
Yeah. It actually is also possible that the Type 1 thresholds in 617.4B6V sets a Type 1 threshold at 100,000 square feet for a facility in a municipality having a population of 150,000 or less, which fiscal is.
So, 25% of that is...
Well, but so, even at that threshold, the proposed three new buildings total 97,575 square feet. And if you add that to the gas station, which isn't specified as how big it is, but it's probably more than, what's that, more than 2200 square feet. And because there, you know, the configurations of the access and the changes in all the parking and circulation, my feeble interpretation would be to include that square footage of the gas station, which would probably bring you over the 100,000 square foot threshold, forgetting about the 25% factor of it. So, either way, it looks like to me it could be a Type 1 action, as you had said. So, I agree, though, we should probably get that all figured out, and then revisit that at the next discussion on this.
Yeah, and I'll take a look at the commercial threshold.
Yeah.
But I, the one thing would be helpful, again, this has to do with the site area, so I tried to make two different EAF mapper blanks, which I do with every project. I look at the site and try to find it, and print out my EAF mapper blank, and what I mean by that is, for the planning board's interest, the platform will automatically generate information on an EAF form. It doesn't fill out the whole thing, just certain items from the state's database. And one of the things that does show up is archaeological sensitivity, endangered or threatened species, wetlands, aquifer, that kind of stuff. And on the one that I drew, there were two EAF mapper blanks that were attached to this review memo, and the first one, I believe, is an outline of the front part of the site. And so, I do believe that that represents the area you're developing, so. It does have archaeological sensitivity, but maybe I didn't get the, maybe I didn't get the polygon correctly when I drew it. The second one is the back part, and I understand your hesitancy there.
Wet, I think wetlands are mentioned, that's completely in the back.
That would be in the back.
Yeah.
But on the one in the front, there's endangered or threatened bald eagle and Indiana bat, and also, not historic, but archaeological. And, you know, that stuff can still be there, even if it's been built before. A lot of times, what happens is, things get capped over by whatever it is that's there. But it could definitely still be there.
Absolutely.
And it may turn out that, once you find out what's there, that they'll say, cover it over with this amount of whatever in textile, and then build on top of it, so that it is kept safe, but...
Yeah, that's something absolutely to look into. I, just looking at the first mapper, that drawing on the first one, I am 99.9% certain that is not the zoning line. So, the zoning line sort of splits through the middle of that. So, that's something we will clarify on the drawings, but I do not...
That would be helpful. Then we're all looking at the same hunk of land.
Almost certain that the zoning line is sort of ahead and through some of the parcel lines.
Right.
There's a bunch of, there's six different parcels.
Yeah, there were a bunch of different polygons in the plans.
Yeah, six different parcels.
I was fishing.
Four were all done on the project, so, yeah. We'll clarify on that, for sure.
But, yeah, I think that's a priority. I will look at the commercial aspect of Type 1, SEACRA Type 1. Any questions from the board about my comments?
Or just questions in general, or comments about the plan?
I have questions for them, enough for fun.
You want to do that? I mean, we'll go back and forth.
Yeah, I'll wait.
I'm done.
Any specific questions for Liz?
It was very thorough.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I do have some questions, some concerns. I want to just talk about, if you go back to the other one, the rendering of the site itself, if you're going southbound on 9D, and you want to go to self-storage, where are you making your left?
What was that? I'm sorry.
You're going southbound on 9D, and you want to get to self-storage, where do you make that left?
Yeah, that one. Jackie helped you with that one.
Just to touch on this, this rendering doesn't accurately depict what the recommendations are of the submitted traffic report, but if you're coming southbound on 9D, there would be proposed a dedicated left-turn lane into that main drive aisle that connects to the self-storage and the fast food restaurant.
So, my question, my concern is that, I mean, I live on that corridor, and I know what the traffic is like. If you're going to self-storage, maybe they're coming in with a small box truck or something, and now you've got to make them make a left there, instead of making a left at the light. Is that, I just, we have a light, we have a left turn signal, we have a road, I think it would, to me, just make more sense to make a left at the light, and be able to get into the self-storage somehow, instead of having to go down the road and make... and be able to get into the self-storage somehow, instead of having to go down the road and make a left. And that's going to slow traffic, it's going to be, I think, I think it makes it for another safety issue there. And I, I just don't, you know, when I looked at this, I'm thinking, why aren't we making the left at the light? And getting into the, making it so that we can get into self-storage on Pappas Lane instead of going further down. Is there a reason for that?
Well, presently, right now, opposite that signalized intersection, that Pappas Lane, that is the private right-of-way to the residential portion of the back, does not connect to this commercial area other than the existing gas station. But certainly, you hear the comments from the board, the comments that were in the memo, and we're looking forward to receiving comments from the DOT to make sure that we are proposing something that's only safe and an improvement from what's out there today.
Okay, 'cause I understand what you're saying, but if there's any way we could do it that way, it just makes more sense because right now you're going to have people making the left anyway to go to the restaurant. You're going to have people making the left to go into the, into the car wash. And, okay, I understand that, but the self-storage, that, I worry about that just because you're going to have people probably coming in with, maybe they got a U-Haul or something, they can bring something. They're not used to driving down, and now they've got to make a left at a non-signalized place. And I know that road, even if you get, it's going to back up traffic a little bit more. And it may cause a little bit of a safety issue there, so just something to think about. Having said that, that was a major concern for me. I really would like to see if we could do it at the light somehow. The other thing, I know it was in the CPL's memo, but when I looked at the rendering of the building, you know, it's going to be new, nice-looking, but it looks like a giant box. And, you know, and if, we've got to figure out how to break it up so that it doesn't look like a giant box. It just won't look very good. And then if we could maybe do something with the roofline, so that it's just not a flat roofline, something with the facade, just try to make it look, and we've talked about this, like, they talked about this being the gateway. We, I, I want it to look a little bit better if we can just figure out how to make it look not so boxy, if that makes sense. I did want to also ask, I, when we look at the way it's circulated, you can go into the car wash, but then from the car wash, you cannot get to the restaurant or the self-storage. And I'm thinking, if you have this and you're building it, you know, maybe you want to have it so that somebody can go from the car wash to this, you know, to the restaurant without having to come back out onto nine D. Does that make sense? Yeah, so just, you know, these are little things, because every time you've got to have somebody else come back out on nine D, let's say, you know, they want to go, and now they're going to have to come back out, they're going to have to make a left again onto nine, you know, onto nine D, dealing with that sort of traffic to get back to the restaurant. If there's a way that we can somehow make it that, you know, just a suggestion. I think this way, all the businesses that you have there are working together in a sense of helping each other out in that way, right? And, and that's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman.
That's a great point about that kind of cross-access between uses, because I think state DOT also has policies very strongly trying to get that kind of shared access, you know, internally between, even if they are separate parcels, and that's not clear yet how that's going to shake out. But even if they are, there can be cross-access easements, but, you know, shared access between uses would take a lot of in and out, back and forth onto the state highway and back off of it.
Make it easier for business owners and customers and the fire department. I'm wondering, I'm just throwing, I'm just spitballing here, if there's any way that Pappas Lane could be formalized as, I know there was, you said, I think you said it's a private right-of-way, which I understand, that makes sense, because it only goes back to homes. But I'm wondering if it's already serving as part of a way in and out of aspects of the site. That would there be a little more circulation? Again, especially if, like, I've driven a seventeen-foot U-Haul truck once, and it frightened the heck out of me. And I, having to make a bad turn like that is, you know, it could be dangerous if somebody's nervous.
Yeah, we were talking about the status of Pappas Lane before, and we really need to find out
Yeah.
what jurisdiction it is, whether it's a private road, a town road, if it is a town road, how far back does it go? And definitely, if it can serve as a, you know, one of the primary access points to this development, I think that would take some of the burden off of those left turns on Route nine D.
It seems like kind of a natural way already, if the, when you pointed out, the light's right there.
Yeah, definitely. And then again, that has something to do with the, there were some pretty good comments in the transportation portion of the CPL memo that really talks a lot about the turning movements and the, the proposed two-way, you know, center two-way left-turn lane. That there's really some question as to the appropriateness of using that type of lane for those types of left-turn movements into the site. And whether even DOT would allow something like that. It's likely they might not. Because there's, there's really a different purpose for the way the road is currently configured for the current center lane as it approaches the traffic signal heading, I would call it northbound, whether it's, you know, northeast or whatever it is, but heading northward, northbound. That turning lane is really totally for the left turns into Brockway.
Yeah.
Because there's an awful lot of traffic going into Brockway from Route nine D. And that's the intent of that turning lane. And to try to, you know, combine that with some other types of movements in other places, I think, would be a mess. A real problem.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing.
Don't be sorry, just go right ahead.
And the, I guess it's the traffic impact study, where they talk about site access and circulation. They said, one part says the project will be, will be provided via, access to the project will be provided via the existing full-movement driveway along Pappas Lane. Where is this full-movement driveway that we're talking about?
I'm just going to move my cursor. So this is Pappas Lane, that's right here. So the full-movement driveways that are existing, are you referring to, I kind of missed what exactly statement you were referring to?
That's what it says on the, it's, I'm reading directly from the traffic impact study. It says, "Access to the project will be provided via the existing full-movement driveway along Pappas Lane."
Gotcha, yes. So this is in regards to the gas station and convenience store that's here. So in existing condition, it's very open. There's no curb line delineation, so you just see the pavement lines here.
Okay, just, again, when it says project, that basically it's only, that's really going to the gas station and to the car wash, not to the rest of the, you know. So it's, there's really not access to the whole project there, it's only to the car wash.
To the car wash facility, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Can you just point out, do you have a pointer? I know which one is the storage, but as you're, so can you point out the different uses real quickly?
So as was mentioned, there's access from the car wash, gas, or I'm sorry, the gas station, convenience store that's out there today. So this is the front parcel, front area would be the car wash facility that's proposed.
Gotcha.
And then this is the fast-food with drive-through facility on the westernmost portion of the site.
Gotcha. It might be, at some point later in the project, we might want to have our traffic engineer available, I don't know, somehow, if we can have him. I know that we've, we've had consultants before at planning board meetings by phone, which I think is possible, by speakerphone, that's happened before, so.
Well, I.
If, when we get down the line and some of these things.
Perhaps, but again, this is, this is ultimately DOT's jurisdiction, so we can decide that later on.
Yeah. I agree that it is ultimately up to DOT, but I think the planning board has concerns that we're beginning to see. We do have some substantial concerns regarding traffic access and circulation. I think we're going to want to have some clear input to DOT so that, I mean, they're, you know, they're supposed to be working with municipalities to make sure that these types of proposals have the right kind of access and circulation onto the state roads. And the other thing I wanted to not forget to mention, because we, they're mentioned in the CPL memo by Liz, they're mentioned in the county's GML letter, the real need for a sidewalk on the site's frontage along Route nine D. And that, again, goes back to the town's recently updated comprehensive plan. So we really need to figure out how, how we're going to get to work with DOT on making sure a sidewalk is included in these plans.
So John, you mentioned the sidewalk, but it also makes sense that if a sidewalk comes into play, or at least provisions for a future one, for a sidewalk to be, to come off of nine D and into the site for the food. You know, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on nine D.
Yep.
And, you know, you wouldn't want people potentially going walking in through the vehicular entrance. So if that were the case, you'd probably want a sidewalk into the site so that somebody could walk up to the fast-food restaurant. And then furthermore, in Pappas, on the other side from the Sunoco is a bank, and there's also a bus stop there. And so the question of who owns Pappas Lane, would a crosswalk should go there? And some sort of way for people to more safely access that bus stop, which is not really very safe-looking as it stands right now. So I think consideration for that should also be put into, into consideration here.
And you're right, the, the crosswalk situation at the signalized intersection is terrible. There are always people like scampering as fast as they can across the road when there's a gap. And sometimes there isn't really a gap, so there, that could be a real dangerous situation.
And where is the bus stop? Is it near Pappas Lane or?
It's in front of the bank, it's on the other side of Pappas Lane. But it's like immediately on the other side of Pappas Lane.
Oh, gotcha.
The bus, you know, people wait for the bus there, so.
So sort of on the north side of Pappas Lane?
North, yes.
Northern?
Yes.
Yeah.
Going north, because it's by the, it's, it's all.
Yeah, northwest, I guess, yeah.
I'll look it up. I'm sure they have it.
Now, there's also a sidewalk existing on the, all right, where's the north arrow? Okay, so.
Diagonal from the.
Yeah. Again, I'll say, I'm just going to pretend that left is north and down is west. There is an existing sidewalk on the west side of Route nine D that goes all the way along the frontage of that small shopping center that goes up to Duchess Plaza. And so we really need to figure out how a sidewalk will work with this particular site frontage and how crosswalks at the signalized intersection could supplement that and make for much better pedestrian safety in that area.
So we'll end up with sidewalks on both sides? Isn't that nice?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's a question. Ultimately, I think both sides of Route nine D are going to need sidewalks. But we have to start somewhere.
That's the plan anyway.
We have to start somewhere. And I think DOT acknowledges that as well, so we really need to work with them to see how this is going to work best. Without getting too much more into the county's GML letter, I won't go through all of their comments, but they had some very good comments dealing with a lot of the things we've been talking about. But they do also talk about things like parking reductions and shared parking and provision of sidewalks. They get into things like signage and lighting. The architecture of the building, again, which CPL also talks about. So I think we need to look carefully at these, all these documents with all this good information and see how we can, you know, enhance and embellish the plan so that it's really turning out great.
Absolutely. Like I said, we want to work with the town, we don't want to be a nicer, we don't want to impede on the town. We want to work with the town, beautify the town, develop this property that's sort of calling out for some sort of cleaning up, some sort of development benefits everyone. To the extent that, obviously, we've discussed a lot tonight, and there's these extensive comment memos, is there any way that our consultants can now consult with the towns' consultants to sort of iron out these details and, and get something that really is exciting for everyone involved?
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, we're open.
For the board members, thank you. I think we can include the, the whole gamut of our consultants and your consultants approach like we did before.
And does the planning board like to have someone from the board at offline consultation, like if we were to do an online thing?
This kind of consultation is really to, you know, try to figure out and flesh out the things that we, the board has already talked about, not to totally recreate a plan based on what the consultants think. But, you know, I think we, we all have a pretty good idea of what's in your memo without having gone through it with a fine-tooth comb and the county's comments and what you all think about the county's comments. So if somebody would like to make a motion to authorize our planning, engineering, and even our traffic consultant, if they have, if the applicant has questions about some of the stuff in that memo, to, you know, consult and work back and forth with the applicant's team. And if anything sounds uncomfortable to our consultants when they contact you, let us know, and we'll put a stop to that kind of thing. So would someone like to make a motion to that effect, allowing, authorizing our consultants to talk with their consultants?
So moved.
Moved by, um. Moved by Felix. I was thinking Anthony probably would want to second it.
Yes.
Sure, why not?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that's done.
All right, beautiful. If there's any other questions, we're more than willing to answer any questions. Otherwise, we don't want to take up too much of your time. You have maybe another self-storage application offering.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, I think you're right. Let's see, that's at least number four tonight. Is that four or five?
Yeah.
Is it five or four?
Four.
Well, SK, whatever, they have a little self-storage.
Yeah, it's four, four real facilities and one sort of mixed-use one that includes.
Four and a half.
Four and, four and a third.
Four and a third, yeah, four point three thirds.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
So the final review for tonight is Fishkill Self-Storage, formerly known as twelve ninety-two Route nine D, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit for to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you give us a kind of a summary of the, the new recent submission and what is in there?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name is Taylor Palmer, a partner with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader. I'm the applicant. Happy smoky Thursday. I think today's a little hint of burnt toast. Yesterday was, I guess, more campfire. Tonight I am joined by my colleagues, Ally Faustner of Cuddy and Fader, as well as Alec Glad of Cuddy and Fader. I'm also joined by our project. I'm also joined by our project traffic consultant, Rich D. Andrea of Colliers Engineering, our project planner, Aaron Werner of AKRF. And we are also joined by our engineer, Larry Paggi, our historic resources consultant, Bat Selig. She's not with us this evening. And Michael Boyce, who's our landscape architect. As the chairman stated, we are before your board. Those that are left with us this evening, of course, saving the best for last. For our continued secret review, the applicant's proposed passive, low-impact, two-story self-storage facility use that's proposed project, which we pursued pursuant to Town Code Section 15019B. Since we are, since we were last before you on March 9, we did, and it's more fully detailed in our May 24 submission deliverables to this board, our project consultants prepared an extensive update to our full supplemental EAF narrative to further substantiate how the proposal lacks any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts and how it further complies with the criteria set forth in the code as it relates to the same or similar use in this district. Before I turn it over to Mr. Warren to summarize in more detail the contents of the updated full EAF narrative, that was prepared to address both the board's comments, the draft positive declaration that was prepared by the board's consultant, and your discussion with us at the March meeting. I did just want to highlight a few key updates and points. First, as we noted in our submission, the applicant recently held two site visits with residents of the community. Essentially used the notice list that would be provided for a public hearing, particularly the Van Ness neighborhood. That involved meetings of the property on May 5 and on April 29 to receive input about the project. So we really wanted to try and get feedback, further feedback from the public. Based on those two site visits, as we noted in our submission, we did develop an alternative sketch, which we'll certainly show for the board in just a minute, which included, for example, moving the building further away from the Van Ness neighborhood closer to I-84, moving the dumpster enclosure towards 84, adding a fence to the perimeter to keep customers on the site, including significant landscaping. Of course, that's why we have Mr. Boyce. And then we also consider losing additional parking spaces on that side of the building as it reflects that neighborhood. Pending, of course, this board's feedback, we could certainly incorporate many of those details. Of course, the nature of why we're here, and it goes all the way back to our original discussion with the board, is trying to make a determination about the use on the site. So with that, you know, as we've been before you for about 17 months now, we wanted to also highlight a few other important details as it relates to that use. A prior conversation with the board's consultant, the planning consultant, at the last meeting noted the various uses that are permitted in this district. The applicant has considered a number of those uses and indeed, Mr. Werner will go through a very detailed table that was prepared to analyze each of those permitted uses in this district and why we believe and submit that this is the best use for our property. Furthermore, which Mr. Werner will touch on now, in our 300 pages of reports and submissions, you know, we really identify how this project demonstrates that it lacks any potentially negative, excuse me, significant adverse environmental impacts. Most notably, that analysis does include, as I mentioned, a detailed narrative of how the self-storage facility will have imperable or less environmental impacts than every other use that's permitted in the district and also in the R-15 districts, including less impacts than bio-avoid noise, air, municipal infrastructure, historic resources, vegetation, and surface water. Indeed, some of the communications that we had with members of the surrounding neighborhood identified the proposed use as being a lower impact use than those uses in the existing district and that one of preferable or the least bad use. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron just to walk through our updates and then we'll provide just general updates from some of our consultants. For example, you've already heard from our traffic consultant, that report hasn't changed. We did actually have a chance to quickly review this Axelson's report that we received tonight at about 7:25. So we did go through as much as we could of that and we'll try and address those reports for the board's benefit.
Okay, one thing I wanted to just put as a question out there and whoever can best answer it is, you talked about meetings that were set up with the Van Ness neighborhood residents. I was wondering, you know, how the meetings were set up and how many residents attended the meetings and stuff like that?
Sure, Alec Glad, Cuddy &amp; Fader. I attended both of them. The first one was on a rainy Saturday, so only two members showed up, Lisa Sorensen and Byron Blakeon's last name. But then the next Friday, we had another meeting that we set up after we had communicated via email with a bunch of the residents who were helping, they were organizing themselves. There was about 10 or 12 there. Mr. Johnson was one of them who's in the crowd tonight. So like Taylor mentioned, we basically just took the notice list from what is required from the public notice. So we sent out to all those properties, I think it was about 56. Mostly just Van Ness neighbors showed up. We also included our email addresses in it. So there was some back and forth email correspondence and the neighbors had kind of self-organized themselves too and then communication with us.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And I think, you know, later, after we go through some of your presentations, we'll talk more about the alternate site plan.
Good evening, Chairman, members of board, Aaron Werner, AKRF.
Aye, welcome.
Environmental planner on the project. Just Taylor touched on some of that, but I'll go through some of the updates we made since we were here last. We did get our SHIP-O letter after SHIP-O reviewed that Phase 1A and 1B. We have no effect findings, which now is summarized in the EAF narrative. We did send a qualified wetland scientist to survey the property. We didn't find the wetlands. That's included also in the dependencies of the EAF. And then probably the most substantial addition was the Table 1, which we prepared specifically to address 15019B-D1, which does, you know, we talked about this the last time I was here. It does say that language about no greater impact to determine potential similarity. So we took a step and we list every single use that is allowed on the left side within both the RB and the R-15. And on the top, we have various environmental categories, including traffic, parking, historic resources, noise, air quality, visual resources, wetlands, wildlife habitat, water and sewer demand, assistancy with community plans. And we go through each one of those uses comparing it to our proposal. Feel that that does satisfy that particular section of the code and in many ways reads like an alternatives analysis would in a, if you got an EIS. So we think that that does help strengthen our hard look under SEAGUL and hopefully you were able to take a look at that. It doesn't look like we have comments on it yet, but we'll look forward to getting those. We also added some new figures. Specifically, we have Figure 10, which was a visual analysis, a visibility analysis of the project site, focusing on the New River Beacon Bridge walkway and other points west, including the railroad tracks, which you can't see the site from. But that figure and associated photographs walks you through fieldwork we did and where you can see the site, where you can't. And, you know, again, I think it supports our finding of no impact on the aesthetic side, so. That's the summary of the changes we made. We did look over the memo that Ms. Axelson submitted. It sounds like there's still comments forthcoming. We would, I think the attorneys might ask for this formally, but we would like to get authorization to communicate with your consultants if that's allowable. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions on the latest submission.
Thank you. Any questions so far? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the desire to also review the alternate sketch plan. So I will have Peter Wintermantle of REA Segal Architects Office just quickly touch on it. I hit sort of the key points of what the changes reflect, but I think it's probably better represented as visually to help understand sort of the references and why we've done these motives.
Hello, Peter Wintermantle, architect with REA Segal Architect. And as Taylor kind of highlighted in this alternate site plan, you have the footprint and everything. The building itself stays the same. You know, we just push closer to I-84. Another key to highlight is eliminating the parking on the side of the building facing Van Ness neighborhood there. So the, you know, the parking will be at the front of the building and the loading zones now are, you know, only on the side facing I-84 there. So obviously, this does, you know, push the building into the side yard setback. But, you know, it was an attempt to, I guess, increase that buffer to the neighborhood, you know, that existing buffer that's already there and enhance it with additional landscaping as well. But we're open to walk through any other, you know, details of this plan we may have. That's it for the summary for now.
Okay.
And Chairman, maybe we'll just put up, the only thing that hasn't been presented to the board yet is our landscape plan. So maybe we'll ask Mr. Boyce just to present that and then we can always come back to the specific alternative sketch. And that way we can show that.
Okay, that sounds good.
It's the last two sheets.
Good evening, everyone.
Aye.
Chairman, my name is Michael Boyce and I prepared the landscape plan. I'm going to break the plan down into two basic areas. One is the screen between venues and the proposed development. It's essentially a screen of green giant arborvitae. And this, this particular screen is, or this plant will grow to about 25 or 30 feet tall. It creates, it actually creates a nice dense barrier. It's good for sound attenuation. It's virtually deer-proof. And I think it creates a solid barrier to the building. And in this particular PDF, the green giants are closer to the building and up on the higher grade, which will help to screen the building, I think, in a slightly better way than if they were down lower. The second part of the plan is actually a pretty simple planting plan, including a lot of natives. We have typical shrubs, boxwood, hydrangea, pyknanthum, which is a famous plant for attracting bees. We have Monarda fisticlosa, which is another plant that attracts bees. And along Route 9D, we have a repeat of the green giant arborvitae and another native, Fyburnum, which is a plant known for attracting a lot of birds. And any of the lawn areas and the retention basins or the water quality basins are being seeded with a Nomo fescumix with partridge pea, which is a pretty interesting little flower. Anyway, that's essentially the planting. Any comments, questions? I tried to keep it short, it's later.
Yeah, no, that's good.
It's good.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
How big are these trees when you were first planted?
Especially the arborvitae. Eight to 10 feet and they're 14 feet on center. They'll grow to about 16 to 18 feet in diameter. Once they're in the ground, after about year two or three, they'll grow to six feet of growth a year. It's a pretty fast growing tree. And they'll maintain that pace for four or five years and then they slow down a little bit.
Will that work at such close proximity to the stormwater basin that's proposed?
Yeah, I mean, they're fine in a semi-wet area. So the. They're pulled around the basin, if you call it a recer. And they're split into two areas for about access and here for natives. But still, in this area, they should actually thrive, not just survive. So it creates a pretty dense screen.
Okay, thanks. I think we should probably go to our consultants' memos. How do you want to handle it? You two?
Yeah, I'll start with our memo of this afternoon. We, we didn't get a chance to review the entire stormwater pollution prevention plan, but I did get an opportunity to go through it quickly and it does appear to meet the requirements of the state. Mr. Paggi's office put together a complete plan set included all the plans that were identified as missing in our last review memo. And, you know, quite honestly, I feel like the engineering that's been put into this at this point is in very good shape. Obviously, if they go to the alternate plan, there'll have to be some revisions made. But at this point in the process, I'm not sure that it makes sense for our office to do any more detailed engineering review until the planning board either accepts the project or they get the required variance from the zoning board. But I'll leave that to your discretion. I mean, I'm very happy with the level of detail that they submitted this time. So we can complete the review of the SWIP if you'd like or we can hold off until some point there's a decision made as to whether this project is going to move forward or not. Like I said, I looked at enough of the SWIP to be reasonably confident that what they're proposing is going to work and meet the state's permit requirements. So I'm relatively satisfied from an engineering standpoint. So I'll turn it over to Liz now.
Okay.
So it was quite a comprehensive package and we went through it as quickly as possible, I think. There's some more material I would like to get through, but I wanted to get a memorandum out to the board that covers a lot of the bases and also to try to acknowledge some of the things that have been addressed. And this is all toward the use as the central issue. So in the beginning of the memorandum, because it's been a few months, in comment number two, I actually restate that section of the code, 250-19B. So you have that verbiage right there in front of you when you're looking at this. And then following from that, I also, in the middle of page two, talk about the various permitted principal and special use permit uses. So as you know, 250-19B gives you four criteria. And I think it's worth, if you don't mind, if I could just read through those pretty quickly.
I think we should just be saying 15019B.
What did I say?
250.
I don't know what, I have another town that's 250 instead of 150. Sorry about that.
Yeah, 150 is the basic zoning chapter.
Yeah, zoning chapter 150-19B. And the criteria, A through D, include, "Proposed uses shall meet the intent of and be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan." B, "The proposed use shall meet the stated purposes and legislative intent of the district in which the use is proposed to be located per the legislative intent of given district regulations" or those in 150-13. C, "The proposed use shall not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents." And D, "The proposed use shall share characteristics in common with and not be of greater intensity, density, or generate more environmental impact, including but not limited to having no greater adverse effects on traffic, noise, air quality, parking, or any other reasonably relevant attribute." air quality, parking, or any other reasonably relevant attribute than those listed in the zoning district in which it is to be located." And I guess the one observation that I had, I went through the materials as quickly as I could. I looked at your response letter and I also made my way through most of the text in the assessment. And it just seemed that there was a certain amount of focus on impacts, which is fine because those need to be addressed as well. So there's a great deal of detail on that. And in fact, there were quite a number of traffic impacts in, I guess I would call it, the 11 by 17 table that goes through the potential development scenarios and provides traffic, parking, historic resources, noise, air quality, visual, community character, wetlands, wildlife, water and sewer, and consistency with community plans. We're going to have our traffic person have a look at the traffic column especially. I know traffic's a concern there. The one thing that I didn't see that I'm, I thought I'd asked for in my last set of comments was a hotel with no restaurant, that that should be evaluated. So I, I still think that that should be done in that table. So we will have our traffic person look at all that information because I think that's very important. And then the next section, page, middle of page two, I'm kind of reiterating information for the board about uses that are allowed on this site. And there's quite a variety of residential and non-residential. So I'm not going to read through those. And I guess the thing that I was missing, that there didn't seem to be a lot about the town's comprehensive plan and, and just, you know, land use generally. So I still think that could be beefed up a little bit. And again, I'm still looking through some of that text. Let's see. And we acknowledge that traffic is one of the decisions here. I guess the, the point that I want to make is it is important to look at impacts. But if you just pretend for a second that you could go around town and look at a site and say, "Well, this isn't allowed here, but I can come up with a use that has fewer impacts in this area and we have these provisions." And I'm saying that to allow the board to really take seriously what kind of a decision it is because ultimately this piece of zoning can be used in any zoning district. And so I think what it boils down to is that the board should be mindful of, what's the character of this area where the project is located? And that, that's a little bit what I'm fixated on. I have to admit, I need to take a look at the visual analysis that was done. I went back to my office tonight, printed it out, and came running back here for the meeting. So I do have a number of comments on the SEACER EAF. I did acknowledge that there is a sign-off from the State Historic Preservation Office. So that's one aspect of things that were resolved. And I did read the wetland report and I agreed with its results. I don't think we need a wetland specialist to, to verify that. So I, I did get into the weeds on the full EAF, but I really wanted to try to provide something for the board and the applicant that would possibly be the result of all this. So what I did was I put together a draft, full EAF, Part II, and tried to update it to the extent that I could. So for example, the impacts on land more or less stayed the same. The only thing that I will need clarification on is to have a closer look and see if there's any possibility of bedrock. And then I'm going on to page two. Impacts on surface water, I updated and put the note in there because there, I looked at the submitted wetland investigation. So there are no impacts on wetlands because there are no wetlands on the site. Impacts on groundwater, waiting for review of the hydrological analysis. And John and I are making sure that that gets done very soon. Then I'm going on to the top of page four. We didn't have any issues with air. Plants and animals didn't change. And actually, I think in my comments, I did ask for a habitat assessment.
Can we give a note?
And then... So impacts on plants and animals starts in the middle of page four and goes on to page, top of page five. That hasn't changed. But I think an impact assessment would be helpful. There are no agricultural resources. And then I'm going on to page six. Again, this is all impact on aesthetic resources. I think that's a very important key element. And I realize that there is a New York State DEC methodology and I know that we used that when we had the cell tower. The aesthetic resources in this particular situation, I think, are a little closer to the neighborhood level. But it's important to look at the broader impacts. So I didn't change any of the visual impacts yet because I haven't had an opportunity to finish that review. And then I'm going to skip right over to page eight. And impact on transportation, again, we'll have our traffic person look. So I didn't change any of those. Impacts, and then... Noise, odor, and light, I believe I left that the same. And then when we get to page 10, consistency with community plans and consistency with community character, I didn't change any of those. I did mention in a couple of places in the review memo that the town did just adopt on May 5th, the comprehensive plan update. And so I tried to point out a couple of things that I thought pertain to the project in my comments. But in terms of supporting any, anything about community character or comprehensive planning, that would be the plan to look at now, even though I've acknowledged the zoning is based on the 2009 plan. The comprehensive plan update of 2023 is an update. It's a substantial update. It is a whole new set of planning objectives. But it still does rely on 2009 as its basis. So one of the things I point out is that there is a gateway map in there and that this project falls within one of the gateway corridors. So I tried to give you a citation on where you can find that in the comprehensive plan update. Those are very important areas. And just so the applicant is aware, the plan was based on sort of an outline of the 2009 plan, the main points in it. A lot of the topics got reordered. So the committee found that there were new priorities for the town. And it was a very involved committee, folks from the community. So it's definitely, we definitely want to draw on that plan. And I don't know if we... I guess those are my main points. And again, I still am going to review the visual study and anything else. Some of your text, I didn't completely, you know, finish reviewing. So I still need to do that. So I guess I would have, I don't know how the board would like to do this, an amended review. I tried to provide whatever I could for this meeting and whatever conclusions could be brought out that were new, but I want to give credit to the amount of work that was done. So.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. That's, you know, on both parts, the applicant's work in getting this new packet together and our consultant's work in going through it all. And Liz's, you know, knowledge and expertise on the comprehensive plan update that she helped the town greatly come up with. And I appreciate that you did try to go through the EAF Part II and, you know, revise that according, as much as you had time for it, update it according to the new materials we've received. I think when you, I did get a chance to look at the visual analysis myself and I think when you look at that, you'll find that there's some really good stuff in there and you'll, you might end up thinking about revising some of the sections in the aesthetic section based on that. So, yeah, we're, we're sort of starting to run out of time for tonight. But one thing I did want to do was talk a little bit more about the alternate site plan. And maybe, yeah, I'll, I'll let you... Yeah, go ahead.
Some thoughts on a few of those comments? I'll be brief as I can. So reminder that, you know, the part, the EAF narrative does follow, still follows along with the Part II. And if most of those things didn't really change as far as what was checked off as moderate to large, we still organize it in that way. So you should be able to follow along easily. With regard to the species, Indiana bat's the only thing that was flagged for the EAF mapper. We're assuming they're there, which a lot of folks do in this town. So we're going to abide by the tree clearing restrictions. That's, and that's a note on the plan. So that's how we're addressing that. I don't really think a habitat assessment's warranted if we're assuming they're there because a bat habitat assessment is kind of involved and if you just assume they're there.
Is it, is that all right with the board?
We've kind of gone both ways on that. You know, this is kind of a interesting site. It's a combination of kind of meadow, open lands that were previously disturbed by use as a single-family home. But on the other hand, there is some fairly good areas of trees and wooded areas that, some of which will have to be cut down if this project is approved. So I don't know, I'm kind of 50/50 on, on that. A habitat assessment ultimately would certainly be helpful.
That one does go in stages too. There's a first round of it and then sometimes another round. And, and I guess the other thing I want to add in here is that there, there's a few little discrepancies about how much wooded area will be removed and will remain. So, you know, it would be great if we had a summary of how much is there.
And actually, if we did go in favor of the alternate site plan, that's going to change it a little bit more, which is what I kind of wanted to get to in a minute, which is kind of canvassing the board on what you thought about that alternate site plan. Because I think there, you know, I, I know we have to answer the question on use, but some of the details that we're talking about in terms of all the site layouts and, you know, even things like landscaping and screening of the neighborhoods, it's all stuff that is going to help the board make decisions about whether the use is appropriate or not for that site. But yeah, if we went with the alternate site layout, it's going to have a somewhat different amount and areas of trees that are going to be cleared. So my thought was, let's, you know, let's get some input from the other board members on what you thought about the alternate site design. See if we, you know, might want to give a favorable, not pre-committing to the use, but a favorable sign about, you know, moving ahead with some more details on the alternate layout, which might help us figure out some of these other detailed environmental aspects that we're talking about. So I, I kind of was interested in the alternate site layout and especially if there truly is, you know, some input from the neighborhood that's directly adjacent to the site, it might be something to think about.
I think the alternate layout is an improvement, moving it further away from the neighbors. I would love to see what, like a rendering with the landscaping involved to see what the neighbors would be seeing. And what, you know, because if we're moving it further away and you have the landscaping, the way it sounds like it could, could work, I'd like to see what it would look like. So, I mean...
I'd rather see what, we don't see anything about any of the other developments, like the houses in there and everything else. And so to me, alternate and everything else, it's just trying to put something there that I don't know if it really belongs there.
But I think if we could actually have a visual might help. Maybe even help the neighbors to kind of see what they would be looking at. Because I think that's probably one of the biggest concerns is what are they going to be looking at? You know, because let's just be honest, that, that 9D corridor going down is all homes. That's what it looks like. We're going to stick a, a box there that's going to look out of place. And that's, that's probably one of my biggest concerns here. And it's probably a concern of the residents. So if we can figure out what that might look like, that might help a lot. So just something to go off there.
Yeah, we have no objection to preparing those types of materials. I think we've tried to use the visual analysis. We've prepared some elevations. Of course, by putting those same renderings, you'd see 9D, you'd see the highway. Those are the, those are the geograph, that's the features of this area. You've identified the residential neighborhood, absolutely. As Ms. Axerson actually mentioned on the prior application, the actual gateway into the town on the other side of the highway does drive you right past 9D self-storage. So that is the existing conditions on the, on the north side of the highway. It's generally speaking, not inconsistent. It's actually quite consistent with how these areas go. And of course, as we mentioned previously, we specifically brought on R.A. Segal Architect because on the, I'm just calling it the Beacon side of, of, of the highway. Because it truly is a, an entrance into the city of Beacon. The building is being designed consistent with a lot of the factory buildings, both in the town of Fishville and in the city of Beacon. So we're really trying to orient it that way. Of course, this site is set down in the hill. And as you all know fully, you know, as is discussed in the new comprehensive plan, the prison facility is up on the, on the hill. There's a lot of future there that's involved. This application exceptionally contemplates slip ramps or other access really to that facility. So this is not just thinking now, it's forward-thinking like a comprehensive plan. And it is trying to work and understand that what's there today, there is really a transition with that prison property and provides opportunity.
And just, could you just elaborate? I just asked my colleague here, what did you mean by factory building?
So in, in this, well, in this, when you come down the hill from, on 84, I mean, you, you see a very large facility. There's no secret that there's a large prison. I, I always, as a kid, I thought it was Shawshank Redemption. I thought that was, I thought that was the prison from Shawshank. So, you know, behind me is, is useful. But now knowing it's his, it's real history and the multiple municipalities involved in that whole prison site, as it ties the village, town, and city of Beacon together as one, sort of is in their history of Matteawan and, and all of the, you know, the old communities that made up Fishville Landing and things that.
So it's supposed to look like a prison?
No, no, no.
No.
Not with plenty, yeah, we're talking about, we're talking about the factory buildings in Beacon. The architect is designed and the developer used a number of buildings. The idea is to make the facility look like it had been on the site in the existing area, built into the existing environment, much more attractive visually, aesthetically, utilizing screening and bringing in the best landscape architects to make it much more consistent with the area. And really to create a use that's going to be quiet, that's going to have low-impact traffic. And we've talked about a hotel. Ms. Axerson brought it up again tonight. There's much more intense uses that are permitted here. So we're trying to do something much lower impact. The DOT says that's one of the best available uses for this site because it's low-impact. So this overall, and again, speaking with the neighbors, you know, we're looking at what is the least impact use. They don't want a hotel there, I'll tell you that much. So we're trying to put forth a use that's much lower impact.
And I, I do understand that DOT probably would have something to say about the impact based on traffic. You know what I mean? I mean, they're not land use experts. That's all.
If I may, we have Richard D'Andrea from Colliers who can just quickly touch on.
Yeah, I was just going to, Richard Andrea, Colliers Engineering and Design. I was just going to say that the DOT has had input on this. The letter is attached to our report from the 22nd. So they have had significant input on what the use was here and the traffic generation that we, they were, are willing to permit basically. And, and the access configuration with the rights and right to announce.
Yeah.
So just, just, the whole point of that conversation, not just to say the architect was brought on for a specific purpose, but his relation to these communities. But the fact is, you can't hide from the fact that this site is a budding on three sides, state highways, and that it comes down the hill from the prison facilities. You are, you are in an area where we're trying, we're trying to beautify this site to try and tuck it away. and tuck it away from the roads. You can't, you know, the visual analysis shows how little you can see coming on 84 headed eastbound or otherwise with the existing trees that are along the property, and now it's set back into the site. So, ultimately, we're, we're really trying to, to work a better-looking facility and one that's low-impact. I think those are all goals when you're trying to help preserve the community character and the residential neighbors who will want this to be a quiet site. And again, the building itself also offers sound attenuation from the highway that they hear every day from the, the existing vacant site.
All right, just to address Mr. Lopez's request, so, these are the elevations that we've had in the set, right? So, and just, again, there are residences further south, but they're closer to the road. This building's gonna be 200 feet off 9D, it's gonna have the green giants in front of it, as Michael described, it's gonna have a gray change as well. It's not, we're not gonna have, you know, a building right on top of you as you're driving down 9D. It's gonna honestly probably look a lot like the golf course across from it does, where you have a significant screen there before you see anything behind that wall. So, you know, I think, you know, the architect can take a look at maybe adding a, a view from the residences with showing the landscaping, we can take a look at that also. We do have a section drawing in there that shows the separation between the neighborhood and the building and the screening, thick area of wooded area that would remain, plus enhanced by Michael's plan, between those houses and the building. So, I think, you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, separate it and screen as much as possible, the setback is pretty large.
Yeah, I just think that that's gonna be one of the major concerns for the residents, right? It's, you know, you live there, you don't wanna look at a giant building in front of you when you used to have a home there. That's all. So, I'm, that, I think it's important to just get that, I, I, I know you have the, these renderings, but that's not what they're gonna see, right? So, right, so I'm, I'm trying to get an idea of what.
The south elevation is with trees in front of it.
Right. Well, I don't, but again, I don't know where the trees, you know, do you understand? The tree could show.
I'm clear, there's a lot, there's a lot to be done. And then they were hopefully leaning towards the use itself, and then a lot more to come out of the application, the site plan, special term review.
Because at the end of the day, you know, I will, if, if this thing moves forward, you wanna make, I just wanna make sure that the neighbors are happy with what's going in their neighborhood, right? Because they live there. You know, you guys, you know, the applicant's gonna build a business and walk away, it's pretty self-running. These people live there, and they're gonna be there every day looking at this, so I wanna make sure they're looking at something that they find acceptable, right? Does that make sense?
We wanna work with you, we want, we've been responsive, we're gonna continue to be responsive. We can get to this point with the use first, we could definitely supplement the EAF further.
No, I guess, throwing that out there, that's all.
But we are kind of in a catch-22 situation there with use, is it use or is it details? And that's why we've been pushing really strongly to get the details so that we can decide about the use. And that's, you know, so I think you've done a good job with the start of that. What I'd like to see with this alternate site plan, and we need, we've only heard from a couple of the other board members, but if we do pursue the alternate site plan, I think there are some other things we could pursue at the same time that we sort of, we haven't talked about too directly, but things like the colors and materials of the building, perhaps softer earth-tone colors. That black color on it, to me, looks kind of harsh, and I think as viewed by the neighborhood, it, it also would look kind of a little bit out of place. So, I think there are things that could be done to tone down the color, you know, material combination of the building, and also maybe some variation in the roofline to get a little bit of, instead of a flat building, I mean, there's, there are the two sort of mini-towers there, but the long, the long side of the building is basically pretty flat, and if there could be some, you know, some adjustments in the design to add a little bit of interest and variation in the roofline, that might help. And then, you know, another thing I think to look at is, none of these uses or sizes of things are set in concrete, so to speak, so why not look at the possibility of reducing the building footprint a little bit? Those are all things I think that could happen if we do, if the board does sort of, not authorize, but kind of concur that an alternate site plan and design might help us make decisions about this.
Absolutely, Chairman, that's a great point, because we are really conducting an alternatives analysis, going through this, trying to ensure that as a, you know, we would be the third neg deck, you know, third time's the charm of self-storage facilities on your board tonight.
Let me make my speech again about the secret process. If we simply had gone to an environmental impact statement with a POSDEC several months ago, this all could be progressing possibly just as quickly, if not quicker. So, I'm not wed to a POSDEC, but it really wouldn't be that hard to take all this stuff and kind of slap a new title on it and say EIS and then go through the process.
Exactly, we agree.
So, something to think about for the next meeting.
To say that we've submitted the materials that would show that there's no, the necessity of proceeding to a POSDEC would, would provide the information that we've already provided.
What do you think, Liz?
Well, you mentioned the word "use."
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, use, this is a question of use. I did put a comment in here that the planning board is urged to critically review the submitted 11 by 17 table entitled Comparative Analysis of Proposed Project pursuant to 150-19B1D. So, I did start to look through that, and in the table, just for a moment, ignoring the impact values, looking through the various uses that, and this is based, I believe, on a list of uses that I had provided previously, and you will also find those uses. I believe, bottom of page two, I listed uses that are permitted, and same with top, top of page three. To just look through that table, also look through that list. So, it's comment number six and comment number seven, and just give some thought to it. I guess I wanna be warm and fuzzy for just a moment or two, because basically, we are in a, we're in a restricted business zoning district, which is meant to be a zoning district for non-residential uses that could also be friendly with residential uses, and it is ultimately, there's a lot of residential uses allowed here. So, I guess what I'm asking the board to do is think about what kind of a field do you want this entryway to the town to have, just in terms of use? So, you know, what kind of character? And that, I think, is really what character is all about. You definitely could come up with a great exterior and a, you know, better-looking corner for, for the building that you have here. It's just a matter of, the way I envision that, before I ever even worked in this area, I would drive to Beacon with my husband, and I just remember as soon as I crossed the bridge, I knew I was gonna be turning right onto Route 9D, or, or going down to Cold Spring, or something like that. And, and there's a feeling you get when you're turning into that area, because you're kind of heading, you know, it's, it's kind of nice and green on the sides, and there's some homes and stuff, and then you get into the core of Beacon, and there's nice little restaurants and places to walk, places to drive off to the waterfront. So, I look at that as a part, I look at this site as a part of that area. And so, it's a matter of how does it plug in? Does it plug in as a storage place, which, no offense, storage uses apparently are, are very important and popular, but it's not as interactive as something like a hotel or a building that has a few little business spaces or starter spaces on the bottom and apartments on top, that kind of thing. So, I don't, I'm not ready to give up on that possibility, and I want you to at least think about it, so that when you get closer to making your decision, you'll feel confident about it.
Well, I mean, for me, like you said on page two of your letter, they still need to look at 150-19B, parts A and B. They haven't, they haven't met that, those two criteria yet. And so, for me, that's what I wanna see in the next application. I mean, the alternative, we talked about that, I, honestly, I prefer the alternate layout to the other, but for me, I mean, for this to continue, I need to see A and B. How are those criteria met before we can even take this any further? That's, that's the crux of the issue.
Yeah, and I look at it like the board is sort of setting the stage for, you know, I don't know, when's the last time you had this kind of a decision-making process to make? So, you're also kind of setting the stage.
Never happened. This, this, never. This is number one.
Just one second, one second, sorry. Just page two of the EAF narrative, which is a 30-page document, does outline a narrative under each one of those, A through D. So, I do urge you to take a look at that. We do look at it against the intent of the district, 150-13. We do agree, we, in our opinion, it's appropriate for resident, next to residential use, you have other storage facilities up the road adjacent to residential uses. The main patrons of these storage facilities are residents that might need extra space. You got a storage facility nearby, that's great, a low-impact, low-traffic generating, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM use. It's not gonna be running all night like a hotel or restaurant. It's all in our narrative, so thank you. Take a look at that and let us know what you think.
So, I guess my suggestion for moving ahead is, you know, again, for Liz to take a closer look at the things that you weren't, that you didn't have time to look at yet. And on the other hand, if the applicant has heard enough from the board to think that maybe taking a closer look at the alternate plan with other variations in the design might be able to help our decision, then that could happen simultaneously. I'm not saying that one should rule out the other. The use and the details, to me, are all actually part of the same question.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, we certainly appreciate the comments tonight, and if I may, just before we leave tonight, if the board would consider authorizing our consultants to speak with the board's consultants.
Yep, is there a motion to that effect?
Can I add a caveat? I, I'd like to be able to, if I'm gonna amend this, to be able to have by next Thursday to do it. That's all. No, I, I, I'm gonna amend, I'm gonna read more into the narrative that Aaron has done, 'cause that was the one thing I wanted to spend more time on, and I would like to amend this review, and I would have it to you by next Thursday. So, when your timing.
By next Thursday?
Yeah.
I don't know why you would need to. I mean, if you could.
Oh, really? I was just hoping to provide whatever review that the applicant would need to know what to do next. That was the only reason I was talking about amending it.
Well, but the thing is, the board's not gonna be meeting again until July 13th, so, you know, getting, circulating an updated memo earlier than the meeting, I mean, early, yes, earlier than this current memo circulated.
Yes.
But not that early. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
But thank you for offering.
But if you do get there, we're gonna.
If that would help you meet a deadline, that's okay, too.
Thank you, Liz.
So, should we get back to the question of authorizing our consultants to correspond with, share consultants, communicate?
Someone.
All right, Felix moves it.
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Oh, one abstention? Six, zero with one abstention. I won't ask why, I don't have to ask why. Okay. Any other questions or comments now that we've kind of gone past our allotted time?
I know we've gone past, but.
No, that's all right.
I don't know if I, okay, I'm gonna ask this anyway, but this is for Dominic and maybe Liz also. We're, we're looking at this 150-19, you know, and we're going through those four criteria, and we're looking at substantial similarity. Those four criteria, are those the only things we're looking at, or is there something else that we could be, you know?
I'll defer to your counsel, but.
Yeah. Or is there anything else we should be looking at, and if there is, how do we define or quantify substantially similar? Because I think at the end of the day, that's gonna be very important as to how we come up with our decision. Does that make sense, the question?
Sure, I mean, it's really, it's a legal question, so, if I may, you know, the focus so far has been on the four criteria, which are contained in 150-19. But as you point out, Felix, is that there are, there's a section that's above it, and that's really what controls and leads you to the four criteria. And I've read this before, I'd like to read it again, because it's really, this is an odd situation where this board has essentially legislative power, right? Because you're making a decision that even though something's not allowed in the zone, it could be allowed in the zone if it meets these criteria and considering this. So, this is what it says. "When a use is not specifically permitted in this zoning ordinance as either a use permitted by right or by special use permit, it shall be understood that the use may be allowed by special use permit of the planning board if it is determined by the planning board with input from the building inspector that the use is substantially similar to other uses listed in the district and is consistent with the stated purposes of the district." So, if you just focus just for a bit on substantially similar to other uses in the district, so, there's, there's been a great deal of effort to show that, and, not to take away at all from the effort, but there's been a great deal of effort to show that the impact is less than other uses, but you also, that, that, in my mind, at least, you know, it's not fully hitting the mark of what this code requires, which is that it has to be similar, and not only just similar, but substantially similar.
And that, that is my question, and, how, how do I quantify that when I look at the uses? I mean, I've been going, I, I've been reading this till I'm blue, okay?
I'm sure.
And I've been looking at the uses, and then I keep thinking, well, it's similar, but is it substantially similar? I, how do we get to that? I don't know. I wanna make sure I'm not doing it the wrong way, make sure I'm, I, and I think the board would benefit from this, too, 'cause we've never been in this situation where we've actually had to do this.
Yeah, and that's, that's interesting, you know, in the sense that this is, you know, a provision that not only is in the code, but also applies to all the districts, it just doesn't apply to this district in particular. And the applicant is making a good-faith effort to demonstrate to the board that they are substantially similar, they presented the information that they have, but ultimately, it's gonna be your decision. And unlike a lot of other decisions that come before this board, like to take a subdivision application, for instance, you know, once the applicant has addressed all the technical concerns and provided that there aren't any significant environmental impacts associated with a subdivision, the board is pretty much obliged to, you know, continue and complete its review. This one, you have discretion, and you're gonna be asked to exercise your discretion. And you're also going to have to refer this to the building inspector at some point for his opinion as well. It's not determinative of the matter, but it says with input from the building inspector, so it would be an error. The question is, at what point do you refer this to the building inspector and ask him his opinion? And I think it's probably at a point where you feel fairly comfortable with the information that's been presented at that time. And that's either with additional analyses that have been provided by the applicant, or as Mr. Cantor said, you know, it's repackaging everything and conducting an environmental impact statement. One of the benefits of an environmental impact statement is, is that it is the one process that affords the board or lead agency, lead agency in this case being the planning board, with the authority to evaluate alternatives, right? So, in the absence of an EIS, the board doesn't. So, in the absence of an EIS, the board doesn't have any ability to look at alternatives in terms of environmental impacts. But an environmental impact statement must consider alternatives.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, one other point that I believe is playing off the planning board attorney's comments. Of course, one of the ways that the board can utilize in that fact, the test that's provided, is the specific factors that it provides. So, the substantial similarity test does lay out four different factors to consider in making this determination. It's not just saying substantial similarity. It gives you four criteria that we've outlined in our materials to address that, one of which specifically speaks to and why we've highlighted it, is we think it's an important one in the context of the community, which is that it's not of greater intensity than those uses. So, that, just to say that it's substantially similar is not enough. It's that it's less intense than other uses. So, all of those factors help you determine about whether or not this is substantially similar. It's not just using that phrase as the determinative factor. It's using those four factors in that section to help you make the determination about this use in general. It's not just those two words, it's those four criteria because those are your specific criteria that need to be addressed in, in making this determination.
Well, I agree with that wholeheartedly and it actually would go one step further is, is what the code says is that you actually have to make affirmative findings on all four, not just one, but all four.
Yeah, it's almost like, but not equal to what the zoning board has to go through with the use variance.
Correct.
They have to meet all the criteria. They have to be different criteria, but-
Very similar, which puts this board in an awkward position because you don't, you have, certainly you have discretion. It's not to say that you don't, but this is one instance where you have a fair amount of discretion because this is going to be your determination.
And kind of not only puts us in a legislative position, but also a quasi-judicial position that a zoning board is often in.
Correct.
I think just, you know, from an applicant's perspective in reviewing this code, you know, I'll finish with this. Of course, it's the smallest of the three self-storage facilities before you tonight. I think this, this opportunity-
Four and a half.
Four and a half, excuse me. That was, that was the bonus question, actually, for Colliere. Wow. What do you get if you get this right? It's a neg deck. But with the application that's before you and these factors and where we are, I think an important consideration of why this code was considered. This is a relatively recent addition to your zoning code. This is not some vintage provision that's-
Correct.
-dusted off from the 1969 provision or something.
Correct.
It's a new, it's new vintage, so it's, it's a bit young and we're really trying to test that, that, that youth. I guess it's smoky today. But with that said, it's giving the board the ability to say, this is a less intense, less impactful use and we've talked about the neighbors and caring about the community and doing it right gateway or otherwise. So, this project, this proposal is trying to, to better fit something than what the code already articulates that's less intense and less impactful and that's why we're highlighting because it does allow the board to make a determination that this is a less impactful use and that's really our position here. It goes through all those factors. We, we respectfully submit, we address each of them, but we're trying to give a better product and something that is better suited for this site that will be less impactful. So, that's-
And one thing maybe that would be a good way to close this discussion out because it is getting later and later as we speak, is that once the planning board goes through the process of weighing the criteria and thinking about substantial similarity, once we get to that point, the code 150-19B, I've memorized that-
Yeah.
...says the planning board may by special use permit allow that use, not shall. That's a big difference. We could go through this whole evaluation, look at all the criteria, find substantial similarity and still not approve it. That's the way the language of that code is written.
I have a really-
And it, it actually does give us the same type of authority that the town board would have as a legislative board, which basically has a lot of discretionary abilities in it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think Member Burke had a comment.
I just have one comment. I don't think anybody here is disputing the fact that it's less impactful. Absolutely. I'm sure the people who live in that area, if I lived there, I would want something less impactful. I get that. I think the point that's being missed is, does it belong there because of that particular location being a gateway? I think for me, my problem is the minute I hear storage unit, I think exactly that. I could draw it on a piece of paper if somebody says storage unit. Maybe if it looked different, maybe that would be an issue. I don't know. But that looks very, to me, like a storage unit.
I think Mr. Chairman also made a similar comment. Colors and treatment can also help, you know, soften or modify, so we appreciate those comments.
Plus a bump up on the corner.
We'll try and scrub some of that beacon off them too.
Yeah. I don't mean, I get it.
You hit Daniel on the head.
I get it.
Use the fish kill brick.
All right. Well, this is, this has been a very valuable discussion and-
Yeah, of course I did.
Appreciate your input and I look forward to seeing what happens at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as the board and your consultants. We appreciate it. Thank you, Devin.
Thanks.
Too late for me.
It's too late?
So, we're going to close the meeting out momentarily. I just wanted to mention, I didn't have time to draft a letter to the zoning board regarding the Healy Hyundai wall plate, but it looks like, it looks like it turns out that the zoning board is only just going to be discussing it with a preliminary discussion at their June, what is it, 18th meeting?
20th.
20th meeting, sorry.
Yeah. John, I cannot hear you and I really want to hear this, so if you just, yeah.
So, what I, what I am hoping to do is put together a draft letter to the zoning board for the board to look at, at our July 13th meeting regarding that wall situation and, you know, get the board's input and we'll come up with a letter that will hopefully make a lot of sense to the zoning board of appeals. So, anyway, that's that. Just wanted to let you know that I didn't forget about it and it looks like we have time to get this to the zoning board for, for their July meeting. And then I'll just reiterate the loan at lunch webinar from the New York Planning Federation, the new one coming up on reading and interpreting site plans. I think it would be a good one for all of us to go to, so please consider registering for that. Anything else that the board would like to bring up before we adjourn? Good. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, let us go home.
That's a yes. That's a second. All in favor? Yes. Let's get out of here.
Good stuff.
Because I'm pretty sure-